And we are now recording. Let me admit, Furman.
Great.
Good evening, Furman. Can you hear us?
I can hear you.
Awesome.
Hi, hello, Furman. Hey, just for the record, it is February 22nd, 2021. It is 6:00 PM. And Furman, you have the honor of being the first virtual applicant for a board in the city of Littleton.
Cool, very cool.
All right, so we're gonna whip through this thing pretty quick, Furman. So you have applied for the Planning Commission as your first choice and the, looks like, the Arts and Culture Commission second. Okay, so first, I'm gonna go ahead and have some questions for you. Okay, as you may know, the Planning Commission does have seven members, two alternates. They are three-year terms. The meetings are held on Mondays, on the second and fourth Mondays of every month at 6:00 PM. Those times are okay for you?
They work.
All right. Planning Commission deals with issues on land use, designs, property rights, and development and review of a comprehensive plan for the city of Littleton. So my first question, okay, attendance on the Planning Commission is crucial due to the work required. We need an commitment from you, should you be selected, that you will attend all meetings to the best of your ability. If you fear an ongoing schedule conflict, you'll let us know. Okay, all right, thank you very much. Have you had a chance to read the powers and duties of the Planning Commission?
I'm sorry, have a chance to read which document?
The powers and the duties of the Planning Commission.
I believe so. I believe that was part of the application process where you had the listing and the responsibilities posted.
Yes, and do you have any concerns regarding your ability to perform those duties?
I do not.
Great, thank you. Planning Commissioners spend a great deal of time reviewing codes and zoning. Share any experience that you might have in this area, and if you have no experience, just tell us how you will prepare yourself to handle these important tasks.
I don't have any of that experience right now, so that is something that I am learning within my current role, is what are the zoning requirements for different businesses? I come with a business focus, but would love to expand that to residential and other components. I think reading, reading white papers, reading zoning requirements is probably the easiest way to come up to speed on new content, but I'm open to being creative in how to build knowledge that benefits that Planning Commission.
Great, thank you. Let's see, the council has made it a top priority to complete the core of the comprehensive plan over the next nine months. Planning Commission is an integral part in this work. What skills do you bring that will benefit the commission, staff, council as we complete these? And this has a lot to do with zoning and codes.
Sure, for zoning, again, zoning and codes, not a lot of experience within that particular realm. I do have a lot of contractual and project management experience as well as community relationship building, which is typically critical in just all facets of work that I find. So figuring out how to hear some of the needs of different audiences and how to broker relationships. So negotiation as well is something that I feel I'm pretty good at.
Great, thank you. Cities all over are dealing with the challenges of affordable, attainable housing, construction defects, limitations, increased traffic, and other growth issues. Littleton is no different. Let's see, as a newly, as a nearly built-out community, what roles on the Planning Commission play as it relates to this conversation and eventual decision that may need to be made? How would you address those?
Can you please repeat that question?
Sort of messed it up, I'm sorry. Cities all over, all over are dealing with the challenges of affordable and attainable housing, construction defect limitations, increased traffic, and other growth issues. Littleton is no different. As a nearly built-out community, what role can the Planning Commission play as it relates to this conversation and eventual decisions that may need to be made?
I think the Planning Commission can absolutely research what other communities have implemented and how they have solved very similar challenges. I think engaging the community to solicit feedback is another mechanism and lever that the Planning Commission can utilize to help influence and help provide information for those decisions to be made.
Thank you. Share your thoughts regarding the quasi-judicial decisions-making and how you see yourself working with a board governing by these rules.
I'm sorry, I didn't understand that question.
Scott, would you just give us your 30-second quasi-judicial?
Yeah, sure, so with certain issues, certain boards are required to act like a judge, meaning hear a record, make a decision based on standards, as opposed to making a political decision based on their own personal wishes.
Okay, thank you, Scott. He's our, he's an attorney, so I just assume he'd do it rather than I, so anyway. So the question again was regarding quasi-judicial decision-making. How do you see yourself working within a board governing by these rules?
I think the, I think being part of a board, your interest is always in the betterment of the community that you are serving, and your personal objectives should help surface questions that help guide good decision-making, but I think one's personal interests should never influence their particular decision-making per se. So, so I think you have to have the better interest of the community at large when you make those decisions, and that is the responsibility of a board or a commission.
Thank you. The planning, and this is your last question from me. The Planning Commission is recommending body to the city council. Council does not have to take the planning commission's recommendation, occasionally it does not. What will you bring to the relationship to the board or to the commission and the council in order to support the decisions of the commission and the vision of the council?
I think an understanding of, we are, well, as individual citizens, we want to support the decision-making process within community, and we also want for voices and a variety of perspectives to be heard. So I think in many roles, in many instances, you help influence processes, and if you if you're unable to get your particular agenda advanced, it's still important to support whatever agenda is proposed and pushed on, and ensure that whatever important and critical pieces of information that need to be or policies that need to be considered the next time are not lost, and continue to be resurfaced when opportunities present themselves to do so.
Great, thank you very much. And this time has run short on us, that's for sure. I'm gonna turn it over to council member Elrod. She has a few questions for you as well.
Hi there, and thank you for coming out tonight. I'm going to be asking some questions on the Littleton Arts and Culture Commission. That was your second choice, and I am liaison on the Arts and Culture Commission, so it's my pleasure to be able to ask you these questions. So I'll start quickly, and with, please describe your experience in working in or supporting the arts and culture in a community environment.
I have no experience supporting arts and culture in a particular community. However, I do know that arts and culture is pretty important to create a sense of belonging to and to ensure that people feel that they, again, they belong, they're not visitors. It is a hometown community that they get to participate in.
Thank you. That helped answer one of the other questions. So let me talk a little bit about Littleton and your participation and perhaps some of the events here. So if you do attend arts and cultural events in Littleton, share with us which ones they are and why you attend those.
We have, Michael Lee and I, we've gone to the Littleton Performing Arts Center. I'm not sure if that's the official name, but it's a theater in downtown Littleton to see a couple shows, and those have always been a ton of fun. I would say that's probably the extent of the arts and culture that we have participated in. I know there have been summer events pre-COVID, and although those have been on our calendar, we haven't quite made it to them, but I would say that, that's it.
Yep, so it's called the Town Hall Art Center because that used to be our original town hall, and it was referred to to be a theater. So what are some other things you would like to see in Littleton that possibly aren't being offered or you just may not be aware of? What are some other things you'd like to see on that front?
Well, I think creative community gathering events would be neat. Raising more awareness of maybe sculptures and public art would be another cool thing to see happen within the city of Littleton, and perhaps those all exist, and I'm just not aware of them. And I'd be able to bring some type of elevation or an elevation of awareness to some of those. But public art is, I think, super important, and having diverse artwork presented within the city of Littleton would be neat to see.
So I'll probe a little bit on that. So do you have any ideas of how to make arts and culture, whether it's, you know, as an example you just gave, you know, how do you make that more accessible or some other things more accessible to everyone? What are some thoughts on that?
I think raising awareness of them in community newsletters. I know there's a newspaper that we receive. I'm not sure what the cadence is, but having some type of just, I'm sorry, I'm failing to think of the words, but a column that speaks to different things going on. It could be connecting with people and raising awareness through non-traditional methods like email or texting or identifying what communities people live in and sending very targeted messages to them, using social media and different media platforms that people are utilizing to really raise awareness of what are the local events? Or when you're driving by a particular piece of artwork that's installed, how do you trigger awareness of that? And just make sure people see it. You can also engage people through community centers. We have a great rec center pretty close to downtown Littleton, or partner with businesses to raise awareness of different events going on.
So the final question I'll ask you, especially given your experience in supporting small business. So how do you think the arts can support businesses in Littleton? How do you see that as an asset to be?
Well, I think there is a lot of ways to partner and have art festivals or incorporate artwork on local businesses that draw people out to check it out and also check out that business at the same time. I think there's also a way to gain feedback from business owners to leverage their ideas as well and to figure out how they want to participate within the arts and culture scene.
Excellent. Well, thank you so much. That completes my question.
Great, thank you very much, Furman. Sorry we have to keep moving on so quickly, but we appreciate your, the application. You'll be hearing from us.
Jerry, Jerry?
Yes?
Could we ask the applicant if he would be able to, or willing to serve on other boards if he weren't chosen for his first two preferences?
Let's not do that. They had the opportunity to do that in their applications, and I think he gave us a couple good ones. Unless there's something that you really think an applicant might qualify for, why don't, if so, you go ahead and say so.
The situation we're going to have is that we're going to be short on candidates for a couple of the boards. Not a people, enough people have applied, so we have a choice.
Good point. So with that, Furman, are you still there? So if you're not selected to be on one of those, are you willing to serve on another board that may be available?
Potentially. I wouldn't say no to sending an email and presenting some options, and I'm happy to look at them and see if one sounds interesting.
Great, all right, well, thank you very much, Furman.
Thank you.
Have a good night. Good luck with the interviews.
Yes, thank you very much. And council, as you can see, we went through that pretty quick, and it still took us 15 minutes. And I think the council, the question that Carol brought up is an excellent question that we do, I think we should ask that.
Jerry, will you give that question?
Yeah, I'll go ahead and ask that question.
Thank you.
At the end, at the beginning of an interview, okay, sorry.
Carol, what board are they that are, we don't have enough applicants for?
We are gonna be short on, I believe, HPP potentially, and then we're generally short on BOA and BBOA.
And just as a reminder, council, we don't always have to fill every slot right off the bat either, but I think that's a question worth asking, folks.
Carol, was that correct?
Yes, thank you.
All right, all right, next up, Scott, it'll be you. Can you bring in Mr. Bagley?
Happy to.
Hi, Kent, how are you tonight?
Good evening, members of council.
Hey, Kent, as you know, we always run behind on this stuff, so I'm gonna turn it right over to Mayor Pro-Tam Malin. He's gonna ask you your questions.
Sure enough.
Thanks for spending a few minutes with us, Kent. I'm gonna move through this pretty quickly. We've got just 10 minutes. I'm gonna skip some of the preamble about what the TMB does, since you're the chair and you know well what it does, and jump right into the questions. What interests you about transportation?
Well, I would indicate to you, all of you, that my past background in urban planning and being on the RTD Board for eight years, serving as the Planning Director for the city of Aurora, and also being involved with my own business, which was related to entitlement work. And all of that gave me a background and understanding the importance of transportation, land use, and economic development. And consequently, my career has been related to urban planning, and transportation has been a major part of that.
What do you think are the biggest issues facing Littleton's mobility?
The biggest issue facing Littleton's mobility issues, probably the biggest issue is making sure that safety is our number-one issue in all transportation-related activities, whether that's pedestrians, people with bicycles, elderly, schools. Safety needs to be the number-one thing that we're concerned with. And also, transportation as it relates to how we integrate with other communities throughout the metropolitan area, specifically in the Southwest. And I think that as the Transportation Mobility Board and looking at the Planning and Environmental Linkages Study on Santa Fe, that's a critical component of what's gonna happen in the future in Littleton. Those would be my answers.
Great, thanks. Of all the modes of transportation, auto, transit, pedestrian, and bicycle, which gets you most excited and why?
Most excited, well, serving on the RTD Board for eight years, that gets me excited because of the relationship to transit-oriented development and transit-oriented communities. But however, I'm real concerned about making sure that everybody in the community, no matter what kind of economic background they have, what their capabilities are, everybody needs to have a method of transportation to get to where they want to be in a time that makes some sense. So it's a broad-spectrum issue for people that are older and younger, kids that are going to school, whether it's high school or it's elementary school. You know, we need to be able to get to those places that are most important for us and our families.
I'm gonna skip a question and come back to it if we have time. Transportation is a regional issue. What are the most important regional transportation issues facing Littleton and the region?
I think it's probably cooperation amongst the local communities in the Southwest and throughout the entire metro area. So participation, but communication, cooperation, and working together are absolutely critical. And that's the biggest issue, so that everybody can be on the same page and we can come to good solutions from a transportation perspective in Littleton and how it relates to cities like Englewood or Centennial or Highlands Ranch or those areas in Jefferson County out to our west.
How do you define mobility?
How do I define mobility? I would define it as being able to get where you want to go in an economic way with different modes, but the real critical issue for mobility is it's for the individual to be able to move around the community and get to where they want to be.
Okay. If you had a list in order how the city should spend its transportation dollars, what would be your top three?
Top three for transportation dollars? Components that relate to safety throughout the entire community, whether that's for people that want to cross something like Santa Fe or Broadway, its intersections on Broadway at major arterials, also what's happening with issues of bicycle mobility and also pedestrian mobility downtown. Those are major issues.
Give us your top two ways to educate and engage the community about transportation issues.
Well, I think it's a real challenge when we're in the Zoom world or the Teams world, but it's reaching out, and I know that you've had success in reaching out through different kinds of media, and whether that's Zoom meetings or it's meetings that are actually conducted face-to-face. I'm one that believes that face-to-face interaction really helps because then you can get to understand somebody and have an enhanced conversation with someone.
And we have about one more minute, so I will go back to this other question, which is, tell us how you think Littleton funds street maintenance and transportation?
How it funds street maintenance and transportation?
Right.
I think it's a big challenge, and I know that with what happened in the recent past, there's not a tremendous amount of money in the budget for transportation improvements. I know that the staff does a, almost a yearly, a five-year plan on upgrading various roadways and conditions of roadways, and that needs to be at the forefront of how we're gonna do that. That needs to be communicated to individuals in those communities about what kind of improvements are gonna occur in their community. Aberdeen Village is a great example. Those roads there need to be almost totally redone. I mean, that's a big, a big price, so I hope that helps to answer some of the question that you asked.
And just like that, we are done. One standard question we're gonna ask applicants is if you are not appointed to your first choice, and I know, Kent, you didn't indicate a second choice, do you have any interest in serving on any other boards or commissions?
Well, I really think that with the Transportation Mobility Board being in only a two-year-old board right now, that it's critical to have some continuity in that board as we move forward into the future. And my preference would be to stay on this board to help the other members of the board get more integrated with transportation issues. And I know Dan Radulovich, who is the Vice Chair of the Board, and I have spent a lot of time last fall trying to bring people together, so my preference is to be involved in the Transportation Mobility Board in the future.
Great, thank you so much, Kent. We appreciate it. I know it's fast, but...
Hey, that's okay. Stay healthy and safe, everybody. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Kent.
Thanks, Kent.
You're very welcome. Thank you.
Have a good night.
Bye-bye now.
All right, Colleen, if we can have Stefan.
Wait a second, quick question, Jerry. If I'm gonna do Next Gen, do I have to be done like, what, three minutes early or four minutes early?
Get through as quick as you can is basically how we'll try to do it.
Okay.
You know, we want to give reasonable time to the applicant to answer questions, too.
Okay, but then the person who does schmo will be asking questions, too, right?
After you, yeah, but we, as you can see, it takes a while to get these things out, so. But yeah, we want to make sure we get our questions out and they get a chance.
Carol, did you have your hand up? Carol, you're muted.
It seems in previous years, in interest of time, we didn't interview for the second choice unless there was a lot of time left. Could we possibly just interview for the first choice tonight?
Well, let's, maybe on our second choices, I think that if we have time, let's get through the questions, but maybe as you have your questions for the second choice, council, why don't you just try to maybe narrow it down as best we can so we can, you know, get through these. The first round of questions, the first choice is obviously the most important, but we do want to know about the second choice a little bit. Okay, all right. Okay.
Okay, are we ready for Mr. Barr?
We are ready.
Wait one moment. Okay. Hi, Stephen.
Hi, everyone.
Hey, Stephen, hey, this is Jerry. Thank you for joining us tonight, and we allocate about 10 minutes on these things that goes really quick.
Yeah, no worries.
So our small talk is not much tonight, so I will turn it over to council member Grove.
Hi, Stephen. I'm gonna ask you a few questions here that you don't have to have long answers. Can you elaborate on why you decided to apply to be on the Littleton Next Gen Advisory Committee?
Well, I am still technically under the age limits as far as that Next Gen Advisory Committee, but I have a lot of, I guess, skin in the game in terms of what the next generation is looking towards in terms of things like housing affordability, childcare, education, and just making it a more livable city for folks like myself and younger, so, yeah.
Great. What aspect of serving a city is most important to you?
It's a great question. I, you know, my day job is actually working a lot with small towns, cities, and managing volunteers. And so I think, you know, the act of public service in general is quite important, not only to keep tabs on things that impact your own lives and obviously have a say in the direction as to where your city is going and how it is evolving as a city. But in terms of setting on a particular commission, these two, the South Metro Housing Options and the Next Generation Advisory Committee, were the ones I had shown preference for. They're the ones I have a stronger, I think, a stronger background in, given my background in engineering, foreign aid, domestic aid, working with impoverished communities, the homeless, et cetera. So I feel like I've got kind of a breadth of experience that would qualify me for both or either.
Okay. What do you think are some of the most important issues facing Littleton in the next three to five years?
I think the ambition plan that was set out, you know, highlights a lot of the, not the, I guess, per se, issues, but kind of the topics to highlight. I mean, obviously, coming out of 2020, it is not going to be I mean, obviously coming out of 2020, it is not going to be a, you know, just a dramatic upturn kind of recovery. There are still going to be, especially for those on the bottom, you know, kind of a lagging curve in terms of how that recovery is impacting families, young folks, folks that weren't, you know, even doing that great before the current crisis. But in the next three to five years, it's also a confluence of trying to make a vision for the city's progression kind of going forward in terms of what does it want to look like? How does it want to serve a variety of needs amongst kind of a, both a, you know, aging population as well as those for new families? Sorry, that may have been a bit long-winded.
That's fine. Other than what you mentioned previously, what skills or background or interests do you bring to this group?
So like I said, my background is in environmental engineering. So, and my profession day to day is actually working with volunteers, cities, regulatory agencies, doing infrastructure development projects for low-income communities. So, I mean, I have a strong interest in, you know, infrastructure and development as just a matter of, you know, my profession. But, you know, on a personal note, my wife is also in the, works for the school district as a speech pathologist. We've got a young daughter. So I would say my, you know, my interest varies widely. And, you know, I, you know, in terms of the desire to serve on a commission like this, like I said, I'd love to have a voice and try to bring my expertise to a more public forum.
What happens when there's different opinions for the topics that the group might discuss? Some are very adamant about one thing, some are very adamant about another thing, and they have to come and present their findings or their opinions to city council. How do you interact in that kind of environment?
You know, I, I actually negotiate these kinds of discussions on a, on a very regular basis with both public and private agencies and interested and concerned citizens. And, you know, there's no one, I guess, core trick other than to obviously just listen and be patient. Yours is not the most important opinion in the room. Generally, it should probably be the last to be heard if there is an opinion to be heard. But to, you know, it's always a process, obvious, not just of listening, but being able to kind of dispassionately weigh facts and considerations coming from multiple perspectives. If you're considering things like, for example, housing development, there are those concerned about one particular style or keeping within a certain space of type of development. There may be others who are, again, not necessarily majorities outweighing majorities, but again, differing opinions as to what style and culture and things look like. There's never going to, and knowing that there's never going to be a perfect option that satisfies all parties probably leads you to find some sort of happier common ground that's well within the bounds of the possible, I guess.
And then a quick double check, you won't, you will be under 36 as of April 1?
As of April 1, I will be, yeah, actually, April 29th, I will be 35, so.
That's fine, just double checking.
I'm an elder millennial.
Couple of quick things. Any problem with attending meetings on the first Monday, first Thursday of the month for two hours and maybe some additional meetings?
No.
And if you miss more than three, that's cause for, you know, take you off the board. Would you like to be considered for a one-year term or two-year term beginning April 1?
You know, honestly, I didn't really have, I don't particularly have a preference, so I'm flexible to either. I don't plan on going anywhere. My kid just started kindergarten this year and we're loving it as much as anyone can love school at this point in our lives. But, yeah, I'll be around, so two years would be fine as well as one.
If for some reason you couldn't get your first or second choice, would you be interested in another board?
Yeah, absolutely. I mean, I kind of prioritized, chose the ones I felt like I had the strongest background in that I could contribute the most to. But again, I think the name of the game for me is, you know, finding a way to give back. I participated within my community, you know, within local nonprofits here. So this is just kind of one of those next level steps I've been looking forward to doing.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, of course.
All right, we're going to send it over to Councilmember Milliman.
Hey, Stephen, I'm Kelly Milliman. I'm the liaison for South Metro Housing Options, which is Littleton's housing authority. I have a couple of quick questions for you. So there's a great deal of conversation around the need for affordable, flash, attainable housing. There's also a great deal of misunderstanding about these two programs. Can you please share your thoughts on how to best balance the need for this type of housing and the public's demand that it not be quote, quote, "in their backyard"?
You know, it is something that I don't think any major city-state has ever, you know, come to terms to in terms of finding a perfect solution between nimbyism and kind of getting housing density at a level where it creates appropriate and affordable options while keeping consistent with culture and aesthetic of a community and the feel of a community. I kind of, I kind of liken the nimbyism to kind of an education process and a dialogue process. And I think, you know, again, from my experience with this, you know, there's a lot of distance between what people idealize as the least affordable, least attainable housing and the most affordable and most attainable housing. There's, there's kind of such a wide breadth of option in between. And I think if people are, I guess, involved in that conversation, specifically those whose backyard it is, you know, oftentimes it's more of a process of understanding and being heard about these concerns rather than necessarily a technical solution in one direction or another. Although I'm sure you guys have got plenty of feedback on the new Unified Land Code and the envisioned process, which I'm sure has stirred concerns from different parties.
Yep, we sure have. Okay, so next question. This board, this board manages public funds to support their mission. Have you ever had, have you had any experience in the handling of public funds? If so, could you please explain? If not, please share your thoughts regarding the stewardship of public funds.
Actually, again, my day to day is accessing public funds to do infrastructure and development projects for, you know, social health, well-being. And so oftentimes my job is not only to manage kind of a diverse set of engineering projects in fairly challenging environments. Prior to this position, I did USAID business development work, so I have good understanding of federal contracting mechanisms. Prior to that, I was working on large Department of Defense environmental investigation and City of San Diego investigation projects. So I'm, I guess what I'm trying to say is I'm well-versed with what the charge is when utilizing public funds for a common good. I understand what the ramifications are and what you owe the public in that regard.
Okay. Thank you. Clearly homelessness is an issue that is of growing concern to communities, including Littleton. What are some of the ways a housing authority can support a community who is seeing an increase in this social concern?
I mean, it's a, again, a fantastic question. So I had the pleasure of working with the Denver SOS programs on their emergency housing options downtown. I kind of helped alongside some of the other teams and other interfaith groups that were working on it. I got to see kind of firsthand the obvious complexities that go into it from, you know, not only the planning perspective, but down to physically making it happen and managing it. And obviously homelessness is not just not having a home. It's a confluence of mental health crises and public health and along with housing. As far as for the city of Littleton, you know, it's, you know, even though 47,000 people is a lot of people, it's relatively little where it concerns the resources needed to deal with such an, you know, an intractable, intractable problem. But I think there are steps that you can take, not only in, obviously providing housing options, but steering, you know, protection services and social services and mental health services in appropriate directions before getting to housing crisis problems. So it's not necessarily about just taking a person and putting them in position B, but stemming it off from the, from the get-go to make sure people aren't falling into those ever cascading issues that lead to homelessness in the end, be it health or what have you.
Perfect, thank you. Jerry, keep going or?
But I, I think that was good. Thank you very much for joining us tonight.
Yeah, absolutely.
As you can see, the time goes very quickly.
Well, I hope I gave you at least a good synopsis, so thank you so much for your time, everyone. And I'll leave you till the next interview. Take care.
And thank you so much.
Thank you, Stephen.
All right. Well, thank you, Kelly, for moving that along as well.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
I would like to point out that, and this is in the, in the essence of time management for four nights of this. With three interviewees, we are now 10 minutes behind. If we keep up at this rate, we are going to be having to add a fifth night of interviews.
We'll get through it, but not everybody has a second question, so let's, let's just keep moving. I understand your concern and we're going to try to get through this.
I'm very concerned about this.
Sorry? I'm sorry, I missed what you said.
I said, I'm very concerned about having to go to a fifth night.
Okay.
Four is already enough.
We won't be going to a fifth night. Okay, cool. Counselors, are there any other council members that have that same concern? You don't want to do the second choices? Go ahead, Scott.
Well, I don't think, I just don't think we have time to do it.
Yeah.
It's just impossible to get it into 10 minutes.
It's difficult. Let's, how about this, on the second choices, if there's some time left, I'll have to cut off the second choice questions. If we get to the 10-minute mark, I'll let you know. How's that?
Remember, Jerry.
Go ahead, Trina.
Sorry, remember, it was important last year we found ourselves trying to guess who would have been a good candidate for a second choice because we did not get to ask him any questions. So we do have to allow for some questioning.
I agree.
Move forward tonight, maybe we adjust.
But let's just keep moving along. We'll, we'll get through this. Not everybody has a second choice, so we'll just try to get this done as fast as we can.
And there are six boards that, that we have barely enough candidates for, if not enough. And so there's a possibility we don't need to interview those candidates for a second choice because unless they're terrible, they'll get their first choice. I can list those off if you want me to.
No, no, I would like to get to the questions. They're waiting for us. Let's get to the questions. Colleen, is the next person available?
Yeah, I've got two stacked up and we're 13 minutes behind, so.
Great, thank you. If we could have the next person, is it Trevor?
Trevor Mugilee, let me let him in. Hi, Trevor.
Hi, Trevor. Great, thank you for joining us tonight. I'm going to turn it over to Councilmember Grove. She has some questions for you.
Hello, thank you for joining tonight. We're going to jump in because we only have 10 minutes. I'm the liaison for the Next Generation Advisory Committee. And can you elaborate on a little bit about why you decided to apply to this group?
Well, in, in brief, I can only be in it for another year. I've lived in Littleton my whole life. And if I want to see where the next generation's going and be a part of that, I'd better jump in before I lose my opportunity.
What does jumping in mean?
Well, you know, we, we go to Mission Hills Church just down the road from us. And, you know, as our pastor always says, you, you have your time, your treasure and your talent. You know, I like to help out with my time. And if I have talents that can help with that as well, then I'll offer those as well.
What aspect about serving on a local board really appeals to you other than what you've just mentioned?
I'd have to say, I mean, it's interesting to get involved in the city more. Again, I've been in here the whole, my whole life, well, a brief stint in Boulder, I guess. So I just went out of the country, the Republic of Boulder for a little bit. But, yeah, I, you know, I, I've been here, but I haven't been involved and I saw their openings on the Littleton Report. The report online is nice. I actually, I find myself reading it quite a bit more in a digital format. So I thought I'd give it a try.
How would you, other than what you've mentioned, how would you think you, what skills or background or interests specifically would you bring to the group?
Well, I'm a civil engineer by training and that's what I do for work. So I spend my day, spend my day in front of a computer. So being on the board in the current climate is, is these kind of meetings is, is no, we're all used to that by now, I guess. But as engineers, we tend to try and break problems down into little pieces that we can manage. So I assume myself and others on the board, on the board can, can work to tackle each of those pieces individually or as a group and see where we can go.
What about if there's a conflict in how, the opinions on the, in the group and how, what they want to present to council? How would that, how would you deal with that?
I think it's important to hear everyone's view on a matter. And I believe we're in a democratic society, so at some point you have to take a vote and the majority rules. However, that being said, I, as, as we find in our judicial branch, there's always room for a dissenting opinion and that should also be stated.
What issues do you think Littleton is going to be facing over the next three to five years?
I, I, I think we're kind of hitting the, we're on that Donut effect.
The what effect?
The Donut effect. There's gentrification going on in Denver and, and that's going to push, push different populations around. And Littleton is surrounded, we're gridlocked, right, by other municipalities. So we need to be aware of that and understand how, how we would like to keep our city, well, what parts of our city we like to keep and what, what we are accepting of change. And as the next generation, that's, it's kind of in our hands, so we, I, I would like to be a part of that.
Sounds good. Any problems meeting on the first Monday of the month from 6:30 to 8:30?
I do not believe so, no.
Okay, and just so you know, you have to attend at least 75% of the meetings, so you don't want to miss more than three.
Okay.
And would you prefer to be considered for a one-year term starting April 1st or a two-year term?
I'll leave that at the pleasure of the, the council.
Okay. And I am going to turn it over to your, somebody to ask you a few questions about your second choice. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Trevor. Councilmember Elrod.
Hi, and thank you for applying to the Arts and Culture Commission. I serve as the council liaison on the Arts and Culture Commission. I'll ask a few quick questions. Can you please describe any experience you have in working or supporting the arts and culture in a community?
You know, I, I don't have that much experience. I'll have to, I'll have to say that. I'm passionate about the arts. You know, I love recently, probably the only thing I'd have a say of experience is jumping up and down with the kids and singing along with them at, at a Sunday school at church because both my wife and I help out down at the Raha place, which is the elementary school age. But, you know, I played drum ball through high school, was the drum major. But, you know, as you become a, in a career, and at least in my case, in a career and having kids, I've fallen away from that. It's something I value in our city, but I, no, I do not have much experience in that matter.
What, have you attended any arts and culture events in the city of Littleton? Which ones, why?
Well, we missed the, the concerts in the park over there, Vega Park, this summer. We really enjoy those and, and we've been to several of the Town Hall Out Center performances. I like to catch, not always the best of finding out, but any of the performances at LUMC over in Tchira there, they have some really, really good musical pieces they pull together. I mean, David's pretty amazing over there, so. yeah, those are what I can think of offhand. We go to the museum, check out the art there, but.
You've hit some of the great ones, for sure.
Rod, we have about two minutes.
All right. What, do you have any ideas of how to make the arts and culture more accessible to everyone in the community?
I mean, we're in this weird digital time, and I hope that it can go away in the fact that we, we can always try and take more pictures and have, you know, three-dimensional renderings of art around the city. But I think the more important thing is, I, I think it's been helpful that we've put up signage recently to show off. It seems like they've been showcasing businesses, but I think the more we can showcase, showcase art or entertain, entertainment in the area, I think those signage would help with that. Off of the main roads, specifically Littleton Boulevard, because that's kind of the artery through our city.
So let me quickly touch on the last question then. How do you think the arts can support businesses? So you spoke a little bit about businesses here in your last response. So thinking about it from a support perspective, how do you feel the arts can support businesses as well?
I mean, I think the, the best example of that is when they're, they're intermingled. I mean, the Town Hall Art Center, when, for, for a long time being downtown Littleton, is helpful. I know for a while there, the Arapo Philharmonic was down at at our church at Mission Hills. And it's moved around since then. But I think keeping organizations like that in the city and, and making it known to not just concertgoers, but, but others in the area. So that, you know, businesses can can have food trucks at the venue like that, or I don't know, beyond that, but.
Well, Arapo Philharmonic would love to come back to Mission Hills Church. So if there's any way you can help in that endeavor, I'll reach out to you separately. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for spending time with us and applying. You'll be hearing from us. Thank you very much. All right, cool. All right. All right, Colleen.
Okay, our next one is Brandon Addison.
All righty, bring him up.
Hi, Brandon.
Hello. Brandon, this is Jerry. Thank you for joining us tonight. We're going to whip through this thing real quick. We only have 10 minutes. So I'm going to turn it over to Councilmember Elrod.
Excellent. I get to go first. Hi, Brandon. Good to see you.
Good to see you too.
Okay. So the Arts and Culture Commission meets the second Thursday of each month at 6:30. Any issues or concerns about attending those meetings?
No, I'm actually double checking my calendar right now. No issues for scheduling.
Okay, sorry, I think I said Tuesday. It's actually Thursday.
Thursday, yeah. I, I heard Thursday.
Okay, perfect. I think you are aware the Arts and Culture Commission provides policy advice to council on the issue of arts, culture, and tourism, encourages and supports the growth and expansion of culture and arts in the community to foster vibrant, collaborative, and creative Littleton. So I will move straight into some questions specific to this commission. Can you describe any experience working in or supporting the arts and culture in a community?
Yeah, a couple of things come to mind. Living in Franklin, Tennessee, it was a significant Civil War town. And so one thing that we did is help research and develop just stories we could tell in the community. There's four different festivals and having a place there. And then more recently, out of my own volition, somewhat culturally, we developed a, and Karina, you actually, I think, went to one of these at some one point in time, an ongoing forum where we discuss conversations of significance going on in our community. So more on the, the cultural end.
Yep, I did. Thank you for doing that. Can you share a little bit about some of the arts and culture events you do attend in Littleton? Tell us which ones and why you chose or why you go to those.
COVID has completely changed to some extent. And so, you know, that's been a challenge. I got to reach back into it. Obviously, before then, Littleton Museum and quick story there too, I remember us looking for a home for our kids and had a half afternoon off and went to the Little Museum with my, at that point in time, a seven-year-old and a two-year-old, and them holding hands, walking through the back of the trails. Like, oh, this could be home for us, you know, in the midst of the city too, to have that historic significance. So that's always held a place for us, you know, in, in that regard. Art Depot, I've visited there as well. You know, and, and beyond that, everything that I've done as a family member, it's been kind of beyond and outside the city limits of Littleton.
Okay, so that's a good lead-in. So what are some of the things you'd like to see in the city of Littleton that currently is not being offered?
Yeah. Well, you know, part of it too is some things are somewhat under-leveraged in my, in my estimation. Is there any sort of partnership with Hudson Gardens we can do at Christmas of the lights or some placemaking and occurrence there? I think through any sort of local lectures as well on the significance and history of Littleton. Is there a Jared Art Show that could talk about this and just the, the unique history that our community has? I think some of the stories just are underutilized. You know, coming from Franklin, Tennessee and living in Littleton, they're, they're very similar as far as towns placed in similar foundings, even similar distance to the city. But just this, these stories seem to be, I don't know, what's the word, need to be unearthed. And helping, helping the council and others do that in a coordinated effort. I think there's, there's goals in our city's history that needs to be shared and told.
I think you touched on my following question, but maybe there's some other answers you'll have to this. Do you have any ideas about how to make the arts and culture accessible to everyone?
That's a great question, you know. Can I, let me tell you an idea that we've been toying with, even as a local faith and community leader, and we haven't pulled the trigger on it yet. But this is what we were thinking about even in May of, of last year, of doing a neighborhood art walk. And the idea was to get local Littleton residents to bring their current, whatever arts they're working on, and to share the story of what's occurring. And then it's almost like a socially-distanced art walk, where you have local wine at each station. And you walk through it. So it becomes not only an art event, but a community event appropriately done with safety guidelines. But some way, you're taking the pretense, you know, out of art. And that way too, people are connecting to the artists locally. So it's not just hearing the piece, it's showing their story. So we almost pulled that off this last year and decided to wait on that as, as an aside. But, yep.
I like that idea. Okay, final question on the arts. So how do you think the arts can support businesses in Littleton?
Yeah. Well, they, they both go hand in hand, don't they? I mean, you think about placemaking and experiencing, experience retail. I think having art makes businesses unique and creates a sense of place. That's, that's one thing. It gets it out of the cookie cutter boxes. And secondly, like, any sort of retail environment or business environment, it looks better when it's not an orthodontist office. You know, beige walls and, and old magazines. And so leveraging that, I think, just helps.
Great. Thank you so much.
All right, thank you.
We're gonna jump to your second choice.
Yep.
So.
Councilmember Grove.
Hi, I'm Pam. First question, would you be, as of April 1st?
Pam, could you hold on just one?
Pam's got it. Pam's got it, sorry.
What?
Pam's got it, never mind.
Okay, as of April 1st, would you be over 36 years old?
Yeah, I said that in my application. So I'm, I'm 38, going on 39, and kind of expressed that as well. So the idea was, I'm kind of a, what's the word, like a generational liaison, you know, I'm not a baby boomer and millennial and kind of in between. And so, yeah, technically, I'm over 36. The bald hair is fine.
This board is a specific age range, but would you be interested in another board that maybe you haven't listed here?
Potentially, I haven't looked in detail at, at the other boards. Those are the, the first two that stuck out to me. But one thing I did say for me is since a place matters to me. And also, my dad was a city councilman. And so I think that's part of me honoring where I live, loving Littleton, and creating a better place for others to live as well. So so the answer would be like on the cuff, potentially.
Okay.
Yep.
I'll turn it back over to Jerry. Thank you.
All right. Hey, thank you very much, Councilmember Grove. Thank you, Brandon. You'll be hearing from us. Thank you for spending some time with us.
That was super easy. Okay, great.
Okay, cool, man. Thank you very much. All right, Colleen. I'm, I'm sorry, Scott, go ahead.
No, I didn't mean to interrupt Pam. Thank you. I just had noticed that in his application as well, so.
Oh, cool. All right, excellent.
We saved a few minutes.
All right, Colleen.
Okay, our next one is Lauren Gieber.
All right, thank you.
Hi, Lauren.
Hi, Lauren.
Hear me?
Yeah, we hear you just fine. Thank you very much.
Perfect. Yeah, thank you for being here.
Yeah. Well, and Councilmember Grove has a few questions for you.
Sure.
Hello, I'm Pam. I wanted to, to, let me make sure I'm on the right, okay. I wanted to ask you a little bit about why you decided to apply to be on this Next Generation Committee?
Sure. So Littleton is the first place I've ever moved to with intention. I came to Colorado four years ago from Florida, surprise, surprise. But, you know, I moved, I bought a house in Inglewood, didn't even meet my roommates before signing the lease, you know, and I really didn't know anything about the area. And I started to go around and explore and try to determine what I liked about different places. And Littleton really spoke to me almost right away. I love how close it is to the city, but it's got its own charm and its, its own place. And I love the emphasis that Littleton puts on the community, on small business, on culture. And those things are all very important to me. So when it was time for my husband and I to buy a house, Littleton was the top of my choice. And I absolutely love being a part of the community. And I love feeling that intention with living here. And, you know, I'm just very driven to give back and to be actively a part of, you know, what Littleton does and how Littleton operates. And, yeah.
What aspect about serving on a, a local committee like this appeals to you?
That community aspect is very important to me. You know, I, I like to pour everything I have into what I do and where I live. And so this is a part of that for me. Connecting with other people that feel the same way too. You know, Littleton's a good place to live because people make it a good place to live. And, you know, I'd love to be a part of something like that.
What are some of the issues you think Littleton's going to face in the next three to five years?
Well, I think really the primarily largest one is not having as much of maybe a young influence or, you know, encouraging younger families. And I think that's what's so great about this Next Generation Committee is, you know, encouraging younger families to move here and starting to lay those roots down. I think putting, you know, Littleton already does such a good job of emphasizing art and culture, but I think continuing to do so and maybe doing that catering to younger people, you know, would draw more people here and would just keep that going for other generations.
What kind of skills, background, or interests, other than what you've mentioned, do you think you would contribute to this group?
I think my people skills, my organization skills. Those are two big ones for me. I've done a lot of jobs in my 27 years, but the common denominator for all of them has been working well with people. I was a flight attendant, I'm an Airbnb host right now, I was an administrative assistant. So it's all very much working with people and being organized at the same time, and following rules, you know, as a flight attendant, following lots of federal guidelines and understanding the importance of those. And I think, you know, in a city, that's also how things operate. So, yeah.
What about when people have different opinions? And how do you deal with that? Some people in this group has very strong opinions and, and sometimes agreement on how the recommendation to city council, comes to city council, isn't always an easy road. What are your thoughts there?
Sure, yeah. You know, I think people have strong opinions because they care, you know, because there's passion driving that. So, you know, when I face that in my own life, I think that's important to remember that first, you know, and ultimately, I would say that most people working together in the city have a common goal, and that's to, to preserve what we love about Littleton. So you know, I think just remembering what, what the common goal is, is essential in moving forward with that.
This committee meets the first, are you there? Oh, okay, you moved. Meets the first Thursday of the month from 6:30 to 8:00 to 8:30. And there might be a couple other little meetings throughout the month based on if you want to join a subcommittee. Is that any problem?
No, not at all.
And this, the charter says you can only miss three meetings or else you would have to resign. Any problem with that?
Nope, no problem with that.
We have one and two-year terms. Would you like to be considered for a one or two-year term?
I'd like to be considered for a two-year term if possible.
Two-year term, okay. I am going to turn this over to my colleague here to ask you a few questions about your second choice, but thank you very much.
Thank you, Pam.
All right. Councilmember Milliman, are you still on with us?
No, it's going to be Councilmember Elrod that's going to ask the questions now.
Oh, I'm sorry. I was, thank you for, yes, Councilmember Elrod.
Hi there. Thank you for applying for the Arts and Culture Commission. I serve as the council liaison to the Arts and Culture Commission. So I appreciate you applying. I'm going to jump right in. Can you describe any experience you have in working in or supporting the arts and culture in the community?
Sure, yeah. I have a bachelor's in arts. Actually, writing is my main background with that. I was a creative writing minor. So I've done a lot of, you know, art was always my background, generally speaking. Art's always been a passion of mine. It's been more of a hobby than a job, but I would love to be able to see that infiltrate into other parts of my professional life. And art is extremely important to me. As I've mentioned before, that's one of my biggest draws to the city of Littleton was their emphasis on art and culture. And, you know, it's important for me to preserve that in our community. And I think that's what makes Littleton so great. So, yeah.
So you mentioned that was a big draw for you. So can you maybe share what some of those things were, what arts and culture events you might have participated in, in Littleton, and why?
Sure. One of my favorite places to take friends and family that visit me is the Littleton Museum. I live within walking distance of it. And I just love, I love the, the room that's the history of Littleton. And I always spent a lot of time there. And, you know, I, I've tried to learn more as much about the history as I can. So I love the portrayal of that. The Depot Art Gallery, before COVID, I would go there. The Town Hall, I know, puts on shows. My husband and I were, you know, before COVID, we were planning on going to a couple of those. Actually, the Western Welcome Week Parade was supposed to be on my birthday this year too. So yeah, I feel like as, as involved as I could be, especially within this past year, I've tried to, you know, I immerse myself in any cultural events that Littleton has. And you know, I just really enjoy all of them.
Do you, do you, can you think of any arts and culture types of activities or events that currently are not present in Littleton that you would like to see?
I think that more in, interactive experiences could draw in more people. I'm thinking of like the Santa Fe Art Walks that they have in Denver. I know that's one of my only and favorite things to do in Denver. So I think encouraging the community to do, you know, more, more than just art, you know, food, and combining other parts of the community with it, I think would be excellent. And I know that that's already started, like with the sidewalk art that's been on Main Street. I think Weekends on Main was a great segue into that. So, yeah, I think even seeing that on a larger scale would be really cool.
So stay tuned for the spring or summertime, you will, there will be a wine and art walk at Aspen Grove. So looking forward to there, yeah. Let's see, let me jump to any, you actually just shared some good ideas. Um, let's see, let me jump to, um, any, you, actually, you just shared some good ideas of how to include arts and culture and become much more accessible to everyone. What about, um, you know, as it relates to businesses, what are some ways that you think the arts are, you know, can be, um, an asset and in support of our businesses being successful?
I think that's important for a lot of people, and especially for young people. Um, and I think in an area like the Denver metro, when you have so many communities to choose from, uh, there's gotta be something that stands out with Littleton, and I think that would really help, um, just put even a greater emphasis on the local businesses that we have. And I know that's so important in Littleton. And, you know, it's one of my favorite things about living so close to Main Street, is there's not a chain there, you know? Um, and I think that those types of businesses are the ones that are more willing to support the arts. And, um, I think they go hand in hand, really.
Um, do I have time, uh, Jerry left. I'm gonna ask one more question. I'm gonna come back to one. What do you think are some of the most important ways that arts and culture should connect with the community?
Um, I think it, they should be, they should be connecting throughout multiple age groups, multiple walks of life. I think, um, you know, not, not one demographic should be left out when it comes to that. So I think having a, a range of art and culture that people can feel, they can connect in some sort of way. Um, and I think there's a little bit of artsiness in everyone. I know, like, you know, I joke with my husband because he's like totally opposite, but, you know, I think we can pull that out of people, and I think it really is a good outlet. And I, and people tend to find that, even if they're not, don't consider themselves an artsy person. Um, so I think just bridging those connections, you know, overall, will improve the quality of life of the people here and the people that visit.
Excellent. Thank you so much.
Sure.
So, Lauren, thank you so much. The mayor texted me that his computer died, so he asked me to take over. So, thank you so much. You'll be hearing from us. And council, we are scheduled now for a ten-minute break, so let's all be back at, uh, seven-twenty-two, and remember that, uh, we are being recorded. So, see you in ten minutes.
Bye.
Thank you.
Hey, Jerry.
Hey, Colleen.
You got back in okay?
I believe so.
Okay, they're all taking a quick break. Um...
Okay.
Scott has everyone coming back at seven-twenty-two.
Seven-twenty-two? Okay, so that's...
Our seven-ten is waiting in the lobby. Um...
Yeah, my computer was unplugged and it, I had a struggle to find the plug.
Okay.
So we're coming back at, uh, seven-twenty?
Seven-twenty-two.
Seven-twenty-two, and it'll be Alex?
Uh, Alexis, yes.
Alexis, I'm sorry, Alexis. Great, thank you very much.
Okay, I'm gonna go ahead and go on mute.
Great, thank you.
We're still recording.
All right, thank you.
Thanks, Jerry.
All right, Colleen, how are you doing?
We are good. We have, um, actually, our seven-ten and our seven-twenty are in the lobby.
Ah, cool.
So...
Get through this thing here. We'll make up a little bit of time as we go, I think.
I agree. And I'm emailing our, um, the folks in the lobby as they come in, just to let them know we're running slightly behind and to be patient.
Yeah, that's very, very typical.
Yeah.
The, uh, the, the biggest boards this year, it's always amazing, every year is different. This year is the Next Gen and the Arts and Culture.
Mm-hmm.
They have so many.
And Planning Commission is always popular.
Uh, yeah, the Planning Commission, but it's... Yeah, so it's kind of amazing. It's kind of amazing how that always works that way.
Yeah.
I blurred my background, but I don't know how to unblur it now.
Um... There should be...
What the hell is that, Kelly?
That's a puppy.
See how around his neck?
This is her little pillow. No, it's actually like a inflatable cone of shame, because she just had a ACL repair last week. But she just, I know, she just saw Kevin come in and she's not supposed to be running, because, you know, we can undo that surgery that she, that we just paid a lot of money for.
Yeah.
Yeah, sack the holder for a second.
Oh, we had a, we had a vizsla that had the same issue, and they, and I know you have to restrain them from running for months. Harvett just said, just, let's not do the surgery, let's just keep them from running, and we did that, because he had to do it anyway. And he came out, yeah.
Aw. I know. Isn't she so sad? I know, so it's very sad.
Oh, I look sad. Uh, Scott, thanks for covering me there. My, uh, power plug came out and I couldn't find where the problem was. It came disconnected and I was scrambling.
Sure, no worries.
Like, where is it? All right, but we have, uh, about a minute and a half yet. And then, and I have Alexis in my office here, and that is the next candidate. Alexis turned out. So it, every time I say the name, she, she starts talking.
Oh, you have, I see what you mean.
You have Alexa.
Which is close enough. All right, we're under one minute here. So it's Planning Commission, then Schmo. I'm gonna try to whip through the Planning Commission ones. I've cut back a little bit here as we look, so... Good candidates.
Mm-hmm.
Jerry, do you want me to just ask like three questions, since, um, she's got planning, she put Planning Commission first and South Metro second?
Yeah, if you can cut it down, if we can, uh, get, you know, being behind is not uncommon, but, you know, we'll catch up a little bit as we go.
Okay.
Yeah. Uh, in fact, I was thinking about cutting out one question on Planning Commission, too. I think I will. All right, I think we are ready. It is twenty-two after.
Okay, I will go ahead and admit Alexis Barrer.
Great, thank you very much. All right.
Hi, Alexis, thank you for your patience.
Hi.
Hey, Alexis, thank you. I'm Jerry, and I'm gonna ask you a few questions. We have about ten minutes.
Okay. Are you guys able to hear me okay?
I hear you just fine, thank you. All right. So, uh, attending the Planning Commission is, is, meetings are crucial due to the, the work that's required, if selected. Are you able to commit to attend as many, at the meetings as best you can?
Yes.
Great, thank you. And they do meet a couple times a month on, on Mondays.
Okay.
Monday, weeks. Uh, have you had a chance to read the, the Power and the Duties document for the commission?
Uh, yes, briefly, yes.
Briefly, I understand. It's, they're, they're complicated. Uh, do you have any, uh, concerns regarding the, your, your abilities to do these dirty duties?
No.
Great, thank you. Planning Commission spends a great deal of time reviewing codes and zoning. Share your experience, uh, you have in this area, and if you have no experience, just tell us how you will prepare yourself to handle these tasks.
Uh, I don't have any experience of, um, late, I've been learning a lot of the Envision, um, meetings and, um, meeting with a couple people from the city around some of the stuff that's come up with the Envision planning. So I'm learning and I'm a very, uh, diligent, organized person, so I'm, we'll just have to make space to continue to, to learn.
There you go, there you go, thank you. Uh, council has made it a top priority to complete the core of the comprehensive plan over the next nine months, uh, and that's primarily the codes of the Envision Plan stuff that you've been watching. The Planning Commission is an integral part in this work. What skills do you bring that will benefit the commission, staff, and council as we complete, uh, this planning?
Um, I think I bring like a, and core investment in my community. Um, I, what I've come to learn as I have gone older is that a lot of the issues that plague, you know, the, my, my family, my community, the patients that I serve in this community, um, really start at the core of our, like, city government. And so things like the Envision project are, um, so important in addressing some of the needs of our community. And so, um, I think I bring, I grew, was born and raised here, so I bring this investment here, or with that here. And then, um, now I'm raising my family here, and I see how important it is to, um, to continue to build this community, to keep it as great as I remember it being as a child. Um, and I think I have been spending the last nine months learning more and more about, um, our local government, our commissions, our planning, um, and kind of understanding the unique balance that there is between, like, making it an inclusive place to live, but keeping the character balancing, like making a sustainable place to live, but this historic preservation, you know, balancing open space, but having people have access to the transportation they need. And so I think I, um, bring a lot of good energy, um, to the table.
Great, thank you. Uh, cities all over are dealing with the challenges of affordable, attainable house and housing, construction defects, limitations, increased traffic, and other growth issues. Littleton is no different. As a nearly built-out community, what role can the Planning Commission play as it relates to this conversation, the eventual decisions that may need to be made?
Yeah.
That's an easy one, isn't it?
Yeah, totally. I think every city is, uh, like you said, is struggling with this. I, um, quickly reviewed, I think after, uh, Councilmember Fay, um, had her town hall, she sent out, um, the DEU Chronic Housing, um, homelessness review that they did. And so I was reviewing that related to Arapahoe County, and, um, you know, it, I think it highlights that, like, entering homelessness are kind of things that we expect, especially during COVID, like, um, unemployment, inability to pay rent. But exiting homelessness is really about an inability to even rent a place or own a place related to even being able to have the down payment, having this credit score to do that, or being able to pay the rent or the mortgage. And so, and I think what the South Metro Housing, um, presentation that they did about six months ago highlights that we know that these families are coming, we know that there are needs in our community to have more housing. And so part of the Planning Commission's job will be to, uh, be analyzing how, if we have limited space, how do we have more housing diversity to meet the needs that we know are coming, um, from the South Metro Housing, um, analysis? And then, well, how that will play, and if we don't meet those needs, how we will see the homelessness issue in Littleton continue to increase? Because if people don't have a place to live, it doesn't mean that they're not gonna leave the community. It means they're gonna stay here and double up on houses and, um, double up in cars and things like that, and continue to be a part of the community, just not represented in the way they should.
Great, thank you. The Planning Commission is a recommending body to the city council. Council doesn't, not have to take the commission's recommendation, and occasionally it does not. What will you bring to the relationship with the commission and the council in order to support the decisions of the commission and the vision of the council?
Um, yeah, I mean, I have worked as a nurse for a really long time, so I'm used to being in a room where people disagree on the, on some components of things, but there's a critical decision to be made. Um, in my career, it's been around a patient's health or well-being. Here, it will be around the health and well-being of our community. And I think, and all of those, maybe not all, I should say, in most of those cases, I have handled it respectfully and great, you know, gratefully, and respected the other people in the conversation. And so I think, um, I will bring a lot of energy and ideas, bring a lot of, um, commitment to the role, but also, I, you know, like I said, I have a lot of experience working in situations where not everyone agrees, and I'm, I'm okay with being disagreed with.
Okay, I'm gonna turn it over to Councilmember Millen, has a few questions for you. Thank you.
Hi, hi Alexis, I'm Kelly. I am, uh, the council liaison to South Metro Housing Options, which is Littleton's housing authority. I have a couple of questions for you. Um, the first one is, there's a great deal of conversation around the need for affordable slash attainable housing. There's also a great deal of misunderstanding about these two programs. Could you please share your thoughts on how to best balance the needs for this type of housing and the public's demand that it not be in their, quote, backyard?
Yeah, I think the misunderstanding, and, um, as I spoke to on my, uh, submission for this role, I have worked with homelessness or homeless people for, I don't know, twelve years, and now I work with Urban Peak, making sure the homeless youth there are connected to healthcare, um, and other resources. And I think the perception is that it's because people don't try hard, because people aren't working hard enough, because they just need to get a job, because they have mental health conditions that they aren't taking care of. And I think the, that perception is greatly misunderstood. A people, most of the people that I work with are homeless because of really lots of circumstances is stacked against them, and then homelessness, homeless because of part of the cycle of poverty in which they don't have anyone else in there, that they don't have that safety net that I would have if I lost my job and my husband lost my job during COVID. My parents would have retirement money that they could help us with, they could help us. But, you know, like, there's a lot of people that would help us, and a lot of the people I work with do not have those safety nets. Um, and so I think the, we need to start treating those people the same as we would treat our other neighbors and our understanding of them as the same, that sometimes people just don't have, they have the odds stacked against them, and we need to take care of them just the same as we would anyone else living next door to us.
Good, thank you. Um, so this board... So this board is very committed to providing people a way towards self-sufficiency and promoting dignity, diversity and individuality. Could you please share the skills that you could bring that would support this mission, this very important mission?
Yeah, I think a lot of what I do in my practice, I work with adolescent youth, a lot of them minority, unrepresented, underserved youth, and my role with them is really not to fix their problems, but to help them figure out what, what they can do for themselves and help them navigate the things that are coming up for them, so finding job training resources, convince, you know, talking to them that a four-year college isn't for everywhere, everybody, community colleges like ACC are just as, just as good for some, you know, for someone who's looking to do X, Y and Z, connecting them to places where they can get housing so that they don't have to move into their abusive relationships household, so that they can be safe. And so I, I think I, I work with, you know, both the Littleton and Sheridan community very intimately and understand that there is inequity happening in our own backyard, and that there is a lot that we can do to connect people to available resources, to build a community that will provide for all of the people that are, that are here and coming here, and in a, a safe and a similar way, so people aren't feeling excluded from the community.
Perfect, and my last question to you is, what does a successful housing authority look like to you?
Simply put, it, it does a good job analyzing the needs of the community, presenting that to the council, looking for opportunities to support those struggling with housing insecurity while we put that in place, you know, I know the planning commission, or the comprehensive plan is, you know, we're planning, hoping on having that done in nine months, but that development to have my more diverse housing won't be here in nine months, it'll be here in, you know, two years, nine years, who knows? So, you know, I was just on a homelessness panel through the League of Women Voters, and we have no homeless shelters here in Arapahoe County. So is that something that the Housing Commission can, you know, work to address while we wait for the housing diverse housing options to come to Littleton to, so people have a place to stay?
Good.
Thank you so much for all those answers, I appreciate that.
Yeah.
Thank you very, and, and should you not be placed on one of these, your first or second choice, would you be willing and or open to serving on another board or commission?
Of course, I wanna serve my community in any way that I can.
Great, thank you very much for applying.
Yeah, thank you. Have a nice evening, you guys.
Great, yeah, have a good night. Thank you. Alrighty.
Okay, are we ready for our next one, Mayor?
We are ready for Emily.
We have Emily Kraus.
Great.
Hi Emily, thank you for your patience.
Oh, hi, how's it going?
Thanks for joining us. I'm Jerry, and we have 10 quick minutes.
Okay, let's go.
We're gonna jump right on it, and council member Fay has a couple of questions for you.
Oh, sure.
Alright.
Yeah, I gotta get to the right page for the question. Election.
You wanna go on to the second question to give you a chance to find your info?
Yeah, ironic that I can't figure out what I'm doing and I'm wasting time. No, I'm ready.
Okay, good.
Hi Emily, the election commission reviews, recommends and establishes procedure for municipal elections based on city charter, municipal code and state statute provisions. The commission also establishes voting districts and appoints the election judges. This commission has char, by law, a charter in conducting municipal elections. The commission meets on a needed basis. And then, there is more. Have you read the city charter regarding the responsibilities for this board? And do you have any concerns regarding your ability to perform them?
Uh, I have read the charter, assuming it's what was on the site where I applied. And I don't have any concerns about participating.
Okay, good. By law, the election commission must draw new council district lines if this census shows a significant change. How would you ensure district lines would be drawn fairly?
Um, well, gosh, I would assume that it would just be about like equitable distribution of those, like the current population. I work with the census data all the time, so I'm pretty familiar with it. I know there are a lot of wrong approaches to drawing council district lines, but I think the idea is that every group is the same size, and you don't make any kind of special turns or twists of the line to advantage any specific party, right?
Thank you. The city clerk's office is responsible for running fair elections in Littleton. How would you assist in that process?
Um, well, I think the most important thing when it comes to fair elections is making sure that everyone who can vote has an equal opportunity to vote. So I would assume the most important way to do that is to remove barriers for voting and making it easiest for all voters to cast their ballot. Seems like Littleton does a pretty good job, at least in my experience voting several times in the recent history, so I think that's about making sure that there are plenty of places that you can go in person, and a lot of good, clear information about how to drop off your mail-in ballot and make sure that it's complete.
Okay, Emily, thank you. Do we have questions for Emily's second choice?
We do, and I'll turn it over to council member Elrond.
Hi Emily, thank you for applying and being here tonight. I'm going to ask questions on the Arts and Culture Commission.
Oh.
Yeah, I am the liaison, I'm the council liaison today, and so I really appreciate you having an interest in it.
Sure.
Okay, so I'm gonna jump right in. Can you describe any experience that you have working in or supporting the arts and culture in a community?
Oh, gosh, I, I wouldn't say I have any experience working in it, just a whole lot of interest, and I think that arts and culture are really important. I'm from Atlanta, and I moved here several years ago, and they've done a really marvelous job integrating arts and culture into the community in the ways that work best for the community, and so I think it's really important, I mean, traditionally, it's, it's kind of a like old-school museums-only approach, but one thing I really like about Colorado that I also really appreciated about growing up is that there's lots of different types of art, and art can really be wherever you're at. And I can't tell you how much I appreciate like the kind of downtown area in Littleton and the community that it creates, and even just like the important contributions of the gardens that are around and the statues and the, the art that's more available in a more accessible way for lots of different people.
Thank you. Can you share some of the arts and culture events that you have attended in Littleton, which ones and why?
Well, I can't because I moved here during COVID, so I've been to zero. And I have, I have a, a new baby, so I also haven't been leaving the house much, but I very much look forward to taking to him to all of them. I've been told that there's like a very excellent kind of craft fair scene and lots of events in, where they like block off the street in downtown Littleton, so I would love to be a part of making those happen.
Yes, there are a lot of great activities, we missed them all for sure. I'm going to, especially because you're new to the area, so thinking about what is it that makes arts and culture programs fun, engaging or successful, what does it take to do that?
Well, I think what makes, makes them fun is when they kind of engage lots of different audiences. And when they are accessible, meaning they're not like cost prohibitive or very hard to get to, or they're available at times and for lots of different types of people. I mean, now that I'm a, a mom, I can't do anything past 6:30, so. So I count on things that are accessible to people who have, you know, like lots of different lives and things going on. I think the other thing that makes them successful is when they're not only, it's not only like an event to see art, but it's the type of event that reminds you why art and community are really important. Art's something beautiful to see, but it's also important to have that time to let be around other people, which I know we're all missing a lot right now, so that's why I think you guys do stuff where you like block off the streets and let people like walk up and down. And I, I really like how arts and culture can be really focused around a way to be together with other people, where you are appreciating the art, but are also appreciating kind of the experience.
Sorry, I'm taking copy notes, thank you.
Weird. She read the notes down.
You're just giving me some really great thoughts, so I, I will take that back. A final question, we talked a lot about how important the arts is just to the general community, the people, etc. Thinking about businesses, how do you think the arts can support businesses in Littleton?
Well, I just assume there's a lot of partnership opportunities. I mean, there's, there's like a business out there for everything, and I think that there are so much, there are so many opportunities for shared interests, more than anything, like arts draw people, and all the businesses really want are people. So I think there's sort of a natural partnership there. I'm not sure, I haven't ever really thought about it that way, but I'm sure there are a lot of opportunities. I also think like just proximity is probably a great one, so all the businesses that are located nearby, I mean, I think having art near you, be it like an art gallery next door, or like one of those kind of what are those things called, where you go and have wine and paint? I mean.
Canvas and cocktails.
Right, so no one's gonna be mad to have that next door, because that just increases like traffic, and I think yeah, those would be my two ideas off the top of my head, but I'm sure there's a bunch of other opportunities.
Yeah, great, well, thank you so much. And thank you for your thoughts and ideas.
Sure.
Emily, real quick, that craft fair is put on the first Saturday in October at Kettering Park every year by the Friends of the Littleton Library and Museum, so.
That's like two blocks from my house, that's.
Excellent, excellent. And Emily, should you not be appointed to one of your selections or choices? Are you willing to serve on another board if asked?
Oh, sure, yeah, I just wanted to get involved. I really wasn't sure. I, I can't tell you I've been on anything election or arts before, but I'm a smart person, I'm employed, I'm organized, I'm sure I could figure it out. Emily, are you between the ages of 16 and 36 as of April 1? Oh, no, thank you for that lovely compliment, but I am 37. Thank you. I did read about that youth board though, and I said, shoot.
Alright, well, thank you very much, Emily.
Okay.
You have a good night, thank you very much.
Bye.
Thank you, bye-bye. Alright, Colleen, we're ready for Jeff.
Okay, I'm admitting Mr. Eby, one moment. Hi Jeff.
Hello, good evening.
Hey Jeff, this is Jerry, thank you for joining us tonight. We have about 10 minutes, and council member Fay, who's ready, is gonna ask you some questions.
Great.
Oh, um, Jeff, you're reapplying for the Building Board of Appeals, is that correct?
That's right. This will be my, this will be my third term.
Oh my. Questions for you since you're reapplying? Why have you decided to reapply to the Building Board of Appeals?
Yeah, I think that the number one reason is to provide some consistency to the board. We have four vacancies right now, so we're gonna have an influx of new members coming in, and I just, you know, I think I'm in a good position to kind of get those new members up to speed, fill them in on our recent history, you know, over the last six years, so we can kind of continue to move in what I think is a pretty positive direction. Also, you know, we haven't been extremely active, and I think because some changes in staff at the city recently on the, when the building department, there's been a little bit of delay in the adoption of a new building code. So, you know, I think that's kind of like the, as a Building Board of Appeals member, that's like the pinnacle that I couldn't serve six years without kind of adopting a new building code.
What have you learned during your time on the board?
Oh geez, it's, though we haven't done much, I have certainly learned a lot. You know, I don't have a background in building or engineering as many of our members do. But, you know, I think I, I learned a lot about kind of hearing process, something you all are, have, I'm sure become very familiar with, serving as council members. And then also the few issues that we did dive into, alternative uses of whether, you know, one building alternative is as sound as what's in the code was one issue we dealt with, and the other was a handicapped variance. So, you know, I think on those specific issues, I learned a great amount. Also really learned a lot about how the city staff operates in the building department, what their role is with, you know, dealing with citizens and their applications. And really, you know, I think the, the role, the ideal role that the, the Building Board of Appeals should serve in that as well.
What would you say is your greatest accomplishment while on the board?
Well, you know, the, the two hearings I mentioned, I, I think were you know, important accomplishments. Getting, you know, decisions right for two Littleton citizens regarding, you know, I think what's pretty substantial costs for them to update their homes and their business, by making sure that, you know, that that's done in a way consistent with the code. And, and I think another accomplishment of the board as a whole has somewhat been focusing on our board's independence from city staff and not just being really a rubber stamp group. You know, definitely getting to know them, working with them, learning what they do, but also kind of keeping an independent role as somewhat of an oversight committee, or at least to kind of help with our quasi judicial role, so that's been something we've been proud of.
Describe how you will continue to contribute to the board.
Well, you know, I'm gonna continue to, I, well, I'm gonna bring my understanding of kind of hearing processes. And as well as, you know, just continue to learn about building issues and engineering, that's something I really need to catch up on. But then also just kind of hearing what, you know, the community has to say about, you know, what type of building they want. You know, what level of control and regulation as a town and citizens we want, so just kind of continue to focus on that of achieving that balance.
What have you enjoyed most?
Well, you know, I think building stuff, you know, if you think that's interesting or not, people can have different views, but, you know, definitely just getting to know the people, like council members, fellow board members, and really just active citizens who often, you know, come to our meetings and, you know, share their viewpoints on things, so that's definitely been my favorite part. So that's definitely been my favorite part.
And what, if anything, would you change about the board?
Well, you know, uh, potentially that we meet more often. Um, there's a little bit of inconsistency when, you know, we only get together every quarter. Um, have a hearing once a year, we get a little rusty um on our process. So I think, you know, just working to uh continue to get together and become subject matter experts in our, in our area.
Thanks for your years of service, Jeff.
Yeah.
And thanks for doing the interview.
All right, Jeff, and Jeff, should you be asked to serve on another board or commission, would you be willing to consider that?
Uh, at this time or after um my third term?
With, with this appointment, with this coming appointment.
Yeah, I, I think that is uh something I consider. I mean, um, tentatively, you know, well, thinking long-term, I'll be a citizen of Littleton, so, you know, I was thinking that um I'd like to always contribute um while I live here in any way I can.
Excellent, all right, well, thank you very much, and thanks for spending some time with us tonight.
Yeah, you bet, thank you so much.
You have a good night.
Stay safe out there.
Yes, thank you. All right. We are ready.
Are we ready for Catherine Holland?
Yes, please.
Okay.
Hi Catherine.
Hi Kathy, this is Jerry.
Hi, how are you?
I'm doing well, and thanks for uh reapplying, and Councilmember Fay has a few questions for you.
Okay.
Hi Kathy.
Hi.
Why have you decided to reapply?
Well, I really enjoyed my time on the board and I um found it very interesting and really developed a lot of respect for the, both the city staff and all the work that they put in, and the need for occasional adjustments that, to what goes on. And it's a, quite the balance, and usually the city, most often the city officials know what they're doing, but sometimes there is a place for the, for the board to come in and make some adjustments.
What have you learned during your time on the board?
Learned quite a bit about the zoning code and ten, eleven dash one. And also just how, how all encompassing it is and for what you all do is pretty amazing and what the, the staff has to go through and dealing with, probably what you all have to do in dealing with constituents on a daily basis and all of the, the issues that arise and trying to, again, walk that balance with trying to do the right thing for the city and the right things for your constituents. Because it's oftentimes, just with my little piece on this board, I've seen how often, oftentimes it's hard to explain that, yes, we understand you want to keep goats on your property and do a, this type of landscaping, but it really isn't supposed to be in the middle of downtown Littleton.
What would you say is your greatest accomplishment on the board?
Probably learning, um, I haven't been on the board very long, and I've only been an alternate to this point, but just learning about the city, about the board, about what goes on. And did learn about the landscaping called, now I can't even think of the name of it, some kind of German landscaping.
Hugelkultur.
Hugelkultur, exactly, learned a lot about that, so.
How will you continue, continue to contribute?
I uh think I will continue to tribute, to contribute by continuing to learn and hopefully have the opportunity to work with the, work with the city staff and continue to work with the other members of the board. And just continue to learn will be the, the main thing. And I feel a lot more comfortable now than when I first started, obviously, and, and feel excited about the future and feel more confident now and look forward to what will, will come in this year of COVID. Like for everybody else, it's been, it's been very interesting. We've only had one meeting since COVID, I believe. And so it, uh, hopefully it will pick back up and as spring comes and we'll get going again.
What have you enjoyed most about being on the board?
Just the variety, I, when I first got on this board, I thought, well, this is gonna be kind of boring, actually. I, okay, it'll be, I'll be doing my service and it'll be, I'll learn some things, but it's actually been very interesting and there's been a variety of things, which is, I've enjoyed that very much and look forward to it and look forward to who's gonna show up and what the issues are gonna be.
And what, if anything, would you change about the board?
I really don't think at this point I would change anything, and I may not have the uh, the relevant background to make that decision right now, but at this point, I think it runs pretty smoothly. And, and again, the staff is, is to be credited for that, that the staff and the other board members, that the, the staff runs such a good, a good meeting and provides such material for it, that I'm, I think it's, it's running along very nicely. And who knows what will happen, hopefully we'll get back to being in person soon. She laughs.
Now, your, your second choice was the Building Board of Appeals.
Um, and I actually chose that because I thought it was similar to, to the uh, the Board of Adjustment in that it's a quasi judicial board. And I'm not sure if I should actually be on, I've second guessed myself on that. Uh, my husband is a licensed contractor in the city of Littleton. I mean, he works all around, but I don't know if that might present a conflict. He's never had an issue or anything, but he is a licensed general contractor, so I don't know if that would be an issue with that or not.
We'll, we'll find out.
Okay, um, my preference would be the Board of Adjustment, obviously.
Okay, Mr. Mayor, can we leave it at that?
Yeah, I think that, that's a good place. I think that's good, thank you, and, and good to see you Kathy, and if, if, uh, if given the uh opportunity, are you willing to serve on other boards or commissions also?
Sure, absolutely.
Great, well, it's good seeing you, and thank you for joining us.
And we will see y'all soon.
All right, thank you.
Take, take care, bye-bye.
All righty. Great, I think we are ready for Michael, Colleen.
Okay, here he comes.
All righty, Michael, this is Jerry, can you hear me okay?
Hello, yeah, I can, how are you?
Oh, doing well, thank you. I'm gonna ask a few questions uh first, and then we'll have some other questions about the, your second choice. But first, uh, attending the planning commission uh meetings are crucial due to the type of work that they do. Um, if selected, will you be able to commit to the time, which is on the uh second Mondays of each month?
Yeah.
Second and fourth Sunday? No problem?
Absolutely.
Great, thank, my computer decided to talk to me right as you were, you were saying something there. Um, have you had a chance to read the powers and the duties documents of the commission, and do you have any questions?
I have, uh, yeah, I don't have many questions, uh, just I'm curious to uh understand exactly, you know, our scope on uh what would be our responsibilities um i- i- in general for the, the entire scope of the, the planning of, of the, uh, I'm sorry. Let me tell you this real quick, I know that I'm a little bit flustered. So I'm a real estate agent, and if anybody knows what's going on with real estate right now, I have an immense amount of work right now. Um, and so I am just, uh, just getting to realize that I have a lot of work going on. But I want to assure everybody on this call that this is something that is really important to me. Um, I am a native of Colorado, and I've been in Littleton since I was about nine. Um, and so therefore, yes, I, I, I would absolutely be available for every meeting that is, is uh scheduled uh for the commission.
Oh, good, good. The, the planning commission does spend a great deal of their time reviewing codes and zoning. Uh, share your experience that you may have in this area. Uh, and if you have no experiences, the, you know, tell us how you could prepare yourself for these meetings. It sounds like your, your background in real estate might be applicable here.
Exactly, yeah, my, my background in real estate is that I, I would like to understand more, but also I have had a lot of uh experience with just the um way that Littleton has been set up. Um, I've always been a fan of the way it has been set up. I've always wanted to know exactly, um, I know better what is going on in Littleton. Um, and I feel like I could be a, an extremely valuable resource with my real estate background. Um, I also have a background in mental health, and um for whatever reason, I think that that has given me a, a really good idea of the way that people think um and the way that people in, you know, understand their communities. And so, yeah, I, I, I would like to know more about what is going on in Littleton, but frankly, as somebody who grew up in Littleton, I'd like to be a really powerful force in what's going on in Littleton. Uh, I think it's one of our, our last um greatest little towns uh in the Denver metro area, and I would love to be a part of what is going on there.
Excellent, excellent. Uh, the council has made it a top priority to complete the core of the comprehensive plan over the next nine months. The planning commission is an integral part of this work. Uh, what skills do you bring that'll benefit the commission and staff as well as council that will uh help uh complete this plan?
Yeah, so I, I think my um experience in real estate, uh, as well as my experience in, in mental health, um, I know that uh this town is changing. I know that this state is changing. I have seen it with my own eyes, and I've seen it with, growing up, I went to Saint Mary's of Littleton, and then I ended up going to Mullen High School. Um, and I've just seen such a drastic change in the way that we do things here. I want to preserve the way that Littleton has always been in my mind, um, but I also understand that Littleton needs to grow. Um, it's no, you know, ironic statement that it's called Littleton. Uh, I talked to many of my, my constituents and my other real estate professionals around town, and, you know, they kind of joke about that Littleton is not little. It's never been little, um, but it has a, a really big impact on the way the rest of the state goes. And one of the things I'd like to do um in, in, if I was, you know, privileged enough to be a part of this board, is to show people that Littleton is a wonderful place to be, but at the same time, I wouldn't want them to overtake what Littleton has been uh since I've been here uh since I, I would say two thousand one, uh, not even actually, nineteen ninety-seven, actually is when my family moved here. So, um, you know, not to give too long-winded of an answer, but I, I think that Littleton is such a unique place to live, and we can't lose that. Um, but at the same time, it needs to grow in many ways. There are certain parts of Littleton that need to grow, um, but I don't want to lose the, the amount of Littleton that, that makes it Colorado.
Yeah, and cities all over are dealing with the challenges of affordable, attainable housing, uh, construction defects, limitations, increased traffic, and other growth issues. Littleton is no different. As, as a nearly built-out community, what role can the planning commission play as it relates to this conversation and the eventual decisions that may need to be made?
Um, I think that this commission can play a role in understanding that, you know, we, when I was a kid, um, Parker seemed like Kansas. Um, and when I was uh, just even in high school, which I graduated in two thousand, oh, excuse me, two thousand six, um, even further than that seemed far away. I don't want Littleton to become a, a part of Colorado that is forgotten. So, in, to your question, I would want them to understand, uh, if I wasn't part of the commission, that Littleton has a unique part in this realm of Parker, of Castle Rock, of Lakewood, of all these places that are just growing exponentially. Um, as a real estate agent, I have seen these things uh and these areas just explode. And so I think that, um, to your question, I, I would want them to understand that, that there is a unique part of Littleton that needs to stay the same.
Great, thank you. Uh, the planning commission is a recommending body to the city council. Council does not always, does not have to take the commission's recommendation, and occasionally it does not. Uh, what will you bring to the relationship with the commission to uh city council in order to support the decisions of the commission and the vision of council?
Um, you know, I've spoken about my real estate experience, um, but I don't think that's what I would bring to it. Um, I, I'm in real estate because I really enjoy um finding people the homes that they, that they need. We're a space right now where it's hard to find people the homes that they need. Uh, but I don't think that is the number one thing that I would bring. Um, I, I worked for about ten years working with children uh in mental health, and I think that's what I would bring. I, I would bring to them an idea that our community needs uh community, frankly. Um, I think our country needs community right now. And from whatever side you're on, uh, having our, our small, if you will, town of Littleton, uh, to be able to have the community that, when I used to work with children, and um I, I actually also worked with Rappel County and the jail um doing therapy with them. Um, I, I always found that most people that were a part of the community in Littleton needed more community. I know that, I know I'm repeating myself with the word community, but um there were so many people that just needed to have their, their sphere around them. Um, and I think that's what I could bring to this board is that, understanding we have a wonderful sphere in Littleton, and we need to recognize that more, I think. And we need to have, um, not only the children of Littleton, and that's one of the reasons I applied for the new generation board, but also just the, the amount of people in Littleton that have been here for a long time, but also the amount of people that have come in recently. We have so many new people here to understand that, um, that's what makes Littleton uh what it is.
Great, and uh Mike, I'm gonna go ahead and turn the questioning over to Councilmember Grove. Councilmember Grove, if you could maybe uh shorten a few of your questions, if you can, but if you could.
Um, hello, uh, this is Pam. Uh, I want to assume you're between the ages of sixteen and thirty-six as of April one?
Yes, ma'am, uh, I am thirty-three.
Okay, um, why would you be interested in uh the Next Generation Advisory Committee?
Um, my main reason for that one, and I even put in my application. Um, my main reason for that one, and I even put in my application that I'm interested in any committee that you all feel I would be uh a good fit for. But particularly for the Next Generation Committee, I feel like I'm right on the the precipice. I kind of liked the age range that you guys put at it. Um, I know that I'm not seventeen anymore. And uh that that pains me every day. But I do know
I got some bad news for you, Michael.
But I do know that I um I I have lived in this town for long enough. And when I saw that your your age range was at that point that I feel like I could be sort of a senior member of of that area and of that expertise. Um, I have played basketball. I have um coached basketball. That that was one of the first things I thought of is that I played basketball in this area when I was like nine. And then I also coached basketball in this area when I was seventeen. So I started to feel like, you know, that's a really good place for me to be to sort of maybe be a leader in the Next Generation Committee. Um, I know that it's it's something that um i- is a generational thing. Forgive me if I'm uh if I'm dating myself or dating you guys, but I think that's something that I could be really, really um impactful while also being a leader as maybe an older person in that generation. Um, in in that generational committee. And I think that I could really, really be impactful in what I've seen in the past ten to fifteen years.
Thank you. I think we had enough good answers to the previous thing that I I think that gives us a kind of a feel.
Great, all right.
Thank you very much.
And and Michael, if uh if this or if you're not selected to either your first or second choice, are you you're willing to serve on another border committee?
Absolutely, absolutely. I I just want to be a part of what's going on in Littleton going forward.
Great. Thank you very much and appreciate your applying and and talking to us tonight.
Thank you, guys.
All right. Thank you very much, Michael. Bye-bye. Okay, council, we have, we're scheduled for a break time. Do we, we only have four more to go. Can you want to just uh go ahead? Does anybody need a break? We will, let's go ahead and take a five-minute break. Five-minute break, it is. Okay, so let's come back at uh twenty, let's come back at twenty after. It's a little more than five minutes, twenty after.
Hello?
Hi Denise, it's Colleen in the clerk's office.
Hi, Colleen.
Hi, um, I just removed you from the meeting uh because you joined out of sequence. Did you log in with your city email?
Um, I didn't. I I clicked with the link that was sent to me in my personal email um from you. It just says click here to join the meeting.
Yeah.
It's like it said it was going to send me to the virtual lobby, but I guess it didn't.
It didn't. Do you want to try it again? Cause there is, there is actually an interview in front of you.
Okay, we got about two and a half minutes. Trying to find that fog thing there. Where in heck is it?
Where's the fog thing?
That, well, the background. I I hit blur the background and I'm trying to
Click on that three dots, Jerry.
Oh, is it up there?
Blur background. You just click un- unselect.
Oh, yep, yep. Let me just find it. Apply background effects. Want to take blur off? All right, let's see if that did it. Oh, still blur. Did something. I got a minute to figure it out, Scott.
I literally just pushed the three, three dots and then one of the options is blur or unblur background. It's the one, two, three, four, fifth one down on that menu.
Yeah, for my, yeah, mine doesn't have that. Let's see, it gives me blur option. I don't want blur.
Jerry?
Yes.
If you go down to um the apply background settings, right next to the blur option, there should be like a circle slash.
Yes.
So if you click on that.
Just hit apply.
And hit apply, it should do it.
Ah, okay. There we go. There we go. Well, we have like thirty seconds. Thank you very much. Let's see, is everybody back?
It looks to be.
What's there?
Okay, here comes Jase.
All right. Hey, Jase, this is Jerry. How you doing?
Hi there. How are you guys?
Doing great. All righty, we have about ten minutes and we're gonna just whip through this stuff pretty quick. I'm gonna turn over to council member Grove, if you will, please.
Hi, Jase. Uh, welcome. Couple questions for you. Just want to confirm you between the ages of sixteen and thirty-six as of April one?
Correct, I'm thirty-four.
Sounds good. Uh, can you elaborate a little bit on why you decided to apply to this group?
Um, so I'm currently actually on the election uh commission and obviously I think many of you know that you know, they don't, they meet on a very irregular basis, I think, you know, given given some of the things that are going on. So I just wanted to be on a potential board that was a little bit more involved uh and obviously provide um some of my input um into it. And I I thought the Next Gen Committee seemed like a really interesting one um given my age, um that I could add some value to.
What aspect of serving on a local board interests you other than what you just mentioned?
I I like to be involved, um, you know, especially in my community, uh where I moved with my kids. Uh, well, Ray's started a family here. Um, so I've definitely been really enjoying it and I love um the city a lot. And so I want to try to um be more involved um in it as much as possible in order to, you know, bring more people here and show people kind of what it's all about. Um, it's it's one of those places that a lot of people hear about, but they don't get to enjoy as much as they as they should uh with all of its benefits.
What do you see as a big issues Littleton would be facing in the next three to five years?
Well, I think, you know, we're seeing a very interesting influx of of people right now. And so there is definitely a a lack of of um maybe available housing um for just general population. I think we're definitely seeing a pretty large influx of folks who are starting to catch on to Littleton. Um, downtown Littleton's seen a ton of revitalization over the past couple of years as well. And I think you're starting to see um some of the workforce scene change a bit. Um, you know, SIFT workspaces downtown, I think is was a huge um ad. And um especially in today's sort of work from home um life we're all in, I I think we're gonna see a massive shift happening um with regards to work. I currently work for a company, a startup um company down in Denver. And since this entire, and I I commuted every day um by RTD down there and um I see there being a massive shift to more of a remote culture where towns like Littleton can sort of incorporate more of that sort of SIFT-like mentality to bring more people together. I think there's a huge opportunity there um to really enhance the sort of startup mentality and see what Littleton can be. There's a lot of great technology folks, a lot of great mentors in Littleton, very smart individuals. Um, and so I think that's, there's a ton that could be done there. Um, and with regards to sort of bringing to life that uh you know, the ability for people to feel like they could be here in Littleton and and really get the support that they need from the local um community.
What kind of skills, background or interests would you bring to enhance this group?
Sure. So I currently run a um global product organization for a um local uh Denver-based um startup that was founded about ten years ago. Previously was at Oracle, um based out of Broomfield where I ran a very large global um product team there as well. Um, I sit on the executive committee for um our organization. So I work through a lot of strategic thinking as well as what we're gonna do as a business um to sort of uh continue to grow and 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 figure out where things um can be um for our company. And so I I have a lot of experience with regards to building teams, helping create strategic vision um and figure out what we can do as an organization. Um, and across, you know, very large organizations at Oracle, um to smaller organizations, the company I'm at now uh full contact, which is uh based out of Denver.
Uh, you seem to have a lot of team experience, but I want to ask you, um the group gives feedback to city council and often the group doesn't agree. What are your thoughts when working with people that have very strong and different opinions?
I value it tremendously. And one of the biggest things that one of the biggest jobs that I have as a product leader is to actually gather feedback. I am by no means the expert. And so it's important for me to sort of, in my current day-to-day, as an example, I work with our go-to-market leaders, sales folks, our customers on a day-to-day basis, sort of gather and synthesize the feedback, which is in many cases could be very complex. Come from different points of view. And my job is to gather a lot of that information, take it all in and and make sense of it. And so I I live and breathe um gathering lots of input um day in and day out. And it is a big part of my role. Um, so I I think it's important that people have an opportunity to share their voice and be heard.
Uh, this group meets at the first Monday of the month. Uh, excuse me, first Thursday of the month from six-thirty to eight-thirty. Any problems with making a meeting at that point in time?
No.
And sometimes the group has decided, of course, before COVID, uh to meet uh at other times, there's some subcommittee meetings that meet once a month that are optional. Any problem with that?
Not at all.
Would you uh consider, would you like to be considered for a one-year term starting April first or a two-year term?
I'd be open to the two-year. I mean, the, I'm thirty-four, so kind of thirty-four to thirty-six and be done, I suppose, with that committee, so.
Uh, we have just a couple minutes left. Do you have any questions for me?
What are you, you know, hoping to see out of that committee over the next couple of years, given some of the challenges and or opportunities that we face um within Littleton right now?
I think what we have seen and we what we want to continue to see more of is opinions on key issues that dovetail with what council is working on and what council goals are. And to provide input for, from the next generation, for the next generation, how to engage them, how to attract them. And this committee has done an excellent job of producing white papers over the course of the last year on various issues. And some council highly encourages them and other ones they come up with on their own.
Got it. Okay, that's great.
Anything else?
Um, you know, just definitely hope that, you know, I could, I know I played a part in the election committee. I'd love to, you know, figure out how that could evolve a little bit more um and and be play a lot, maybe a larger part um in in that. Um, but, you know, hopefully my experiences and some of the things I could bring might be uh beneficial um to the um committee.
Just in case, um, you didn't get on the Next Gen Committee, would you be interested in going into another board?
Absolutely. Yeah, I I've when I ju- joined the election committee a couple of years ago, I I really just, I mean, at the time we had moved here, what is it now, four years almost? And I I wanted to be, sort of start to get engaged with my local committee um with the local community as much as possible. I I I value being able to sort of, like you can mention, gather that feedback, talk to people, understand ways that we can improve. And I I just like to be involved. And so um, you know, I definitely am more than willing and happy to be on um other committees as as you guys see uh appropriate.
Well, thank you very much for applying and thank you for your time and um the service you've already given to the city. Um, we appreciate it.
Hey, thanks Jake. And that, the election committee could get pretty busy here coming up pretty soon after we get the census.
I would love to, you know, help wherever I can there. Um, and uh it's a, it's a it's a rowdy bunch. They're they're great. They're great people. It's it's fun. Uh, I feel like Frank, uh, I'm sure many of you know. Is uh, he actually lives not too far away from me. He's a great guy. He's uh, he's very uh, he's he's a lot of fun, so.
Excellent.
But definitely excited to get back, hopefully after all this COVID stuff passes. Best of luck with all the interviews.
Well, thank you for your time, Jake. Really appreciate it.
Take care, guys.
You have a good night. All right.
Mayor, are you ready for Denise?
We are ready for Denise.
Okay.
Mister Mayor, I have a question.
Yes.
Um, can Jase serve both on the election commission and on NGAC?
Yeah, I don't think we have any rules that says people can't, but that's something I'm gonna verify.
So if 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 he gets selected for NGAC, do we need to have another person to take his place on election commission?
If it turns out he can't serve on both, if if appointed to the other one, that would be the case, yes. But we'll, I'll find that out. And I'll I'll report back tomorrow.
We have somebody on Next Gen and the museum board there.
Yeah.
Or the library board, they do two boards.
Yeah, and I'm thinking it's not an issue, but we'll, but we'll just verify just to make sure. Okay, all right. Well, Denise, thank you for joining us. You are muted, Denise.
Try again. Thank you for having me. There we go.
All right. Well, we're going to spend ten minutes with you and council member Elrod is going to have a few questions for you.
Okay, great.
Hi Denise, great to see you.
You as well.
Yes, well, we're coming full circle, aren't we?
Yes.
All right. So I think you're pretty familiar with the Arts and Culture Commission. They do meet on the second Thursday of each month at six-thirty. The Arts and Culture Commission provides policy advice to council on the issues of art, culture and tourism. It encourages and supports the growth and expansion of culture and the arts in the community, fosters a vibrant collaborative and creative Littleton where art and car culture are defining features of the community's identity and unique character. So with that, if you could describe your experience working in or supporting the arts and culture in the community?
I'd be happy to. You probably have all seen my application. I was on the Fine Arts Board for nine years until this last past year and am currently on the museum board. And with the changes that are happening, I was hoping the next segue would be to the Arts and Culture Commission. While I was on the Fine Arts Board, I was on it while I was still a working board. So we were hands-on scrubbing sculptures and that type of thing at the very beginning of my appointment on that board. I've also served as the chair and vice chair on that board over the several years that I was on it. And the love that I had for this city and for the art in the city just grew even deeper while I was able to work with that group of people over the years.
Thank you. And thank you for your service, of course. So I know you're aware of many of the arts and cultural events in the city. Which ones do you participate in and attend and why?
I saw the soft spot for the museum and for, of course, the, the Fine Arts Board shows and jury shows that they do. We try to attend every single one. My family is very lucky. We live right across the, the park from the museum as a matter of fact. So when it's not COVID, we've spent a lot of time over there. The library is one of our favorite places. We also love Town Hall Art Center. My kids enjoy Town Hall Art Center. My son has taken theater classes there, which has been really fun for him. We participate in Western Welcome Week every year. Anything that's happening in the Littleton area, we pretty much have on our calendar. And it's been that way for a long time. And we feel very lucky to be in a community that offers those kind of things. Prior to having kids, my husband and I attended those events as well. And it's just gotten to be a longer list now that we do have kids.
Great. What are some things you think are missing in Littleton that aren't currently offered?
I think we have a really rich program, programming here in Littleton, but I do think that we have some opportunities for different classes, bringing in maybe guest lecturers. We have such a vibrant downtown area. I think that we could utilize that space a little bit more than we even do if possible. I've, over the years, been a part of conversations that have included things like sidewalk chalk art, murals, that type of thing. And I also just think, thinking back to my past, when Aspen Grove first opened, I think that they're hitting their twentieth year this year. They started out with some really amazing arts festivals, which not everybody remembers. But a lot of it was spillover artists that were from the Cherry Creek Arts Festival, either local artists or artists that couldn't initially get into the Cherry Creek Arts Festival. And that was a really ripe group of people because eventually they went on to be very well-known artists. So I think even things like that would be a lot of, bring even more character to our downtown area.
Thank you. What are some of the most important ways that arts and culture should connect with the community?
Well, I think something that we do well already is making our public art visible every day, just in people's everyday lives. I think that that's really important to build a sense of community. So I think that that's one thing that we do well. Building off of that, I think we can do walking tours, different things like that, because we have so many great resources currently at our fingertips. I think that we've got the foundation that we need, taking some of those things and just building off of them and building that reputation even more than it is would be somewhat easy to do. There's always challenges involved, of course. But I think that we have such a great foundation here in Littleton already that we could build a really great cultural scene here and be even better known than we are.
You talked about some ideas that you've, you know, discussed over the years and maybe even more recently. So I'm thinking of ideas and others. How do you feel we could make arts and culture more accessible to everyone?
I think part of it is starting in our school system. I think starting with school-age kids is a great place to start because of course there's parents attached to that and parents have friends and grandparents, all that kind of thing. I think bringing the schools in would be a great start for that. I've got two school-age children myself. And the more they get into art, the more interested they are into going to art galleries, going to even the Denver Art Museum. My five-year-old loves the Denver Art Museum. And I think that that's a really great place to start because the families that surround those elementary age, middle school age, high school age children here in Littleton have pretty big networks.
So it is a good idea. How do you think, as now kind of flipping to the other side from a business perspective, how do you think the arts can support businesses in a positive way for Littleton?
I think something that's fascinating to me about the arts and especially the Arts and Culture Commission is how it does impact our businesses and it does bring in revenue. And I think that that's one way that we can support businesses through the arts, collaborating with them. But not just that, I think that there's been a lot of research done based around people that come to a Town Hall Art Center, for example, or to a Littleton Museum, for example. They're going to spend additional dollars. If they're not spending it on a ticket, they're going to go to a restaurant or go buy a T-shirt or something along Main Street. And I think that it's one way to support our businesses, to expand some of those programs and get them involved as well.
And would you be comfortable serving as an ambassador and advocate for arts and culture in Littleton?
I would definitely be comfortable.
I think I knew that answer.
That was a softball. Thank you for a softball one.
No more questions.
All right. Well, Denise, should you not be placed on your first choice? Are you willing to accept a position on another board or commission if, if asked?
I would be. I didn't put down a second choice because I, I didn't really think of one, especially with the museum board really going in a different direction this next year. I, I love being a part of the boards and commissions community and volunteering my time. And I would, I would be open to another appointment for sure.
Excellent, excellent. Well, thank you very much for your time tonight.
Can I ask Denise, are you between the ages of sixteen and thirty-six as of April one?
I'm not, but thank you so much for asking that question.
All right, just wanted to see if it was an option.
Thank you.
Well, thank you for joining us.
Thank you for your time. Have a good evening.
You have a good night. Thank you. All righty. We are ready for Kelly.
Okay, here you go.
Hi Kelly, this is Jerry. How are you tonight? You are muted.
Sorry. Yeah, and let me toggle. Can you see me?
Yes, we see you just fine and hear you now too. Well, thank you for joining us. So we're going to take about ten minutes that, and you're reapplying for the transportation board. And thank you very much for what you do there. So Mayor Protem Malin has a few questions for you.
Thanks Mayor. Hi Kelly, thanks for joining us tonight. We have about ten minutes for questions. So I'm going to jump right in and ask you, what interests you about transportation?
Good. Well, it's actually grown since being on the board. But you know, what, what attracted me in the first place and, and continues to, to hold my interest is that, you know, it kind of underpins our community and, you know, our ability to move around our community, our, our access to points beyond. You know, there's elements of safety. And I do have a young family. So of course I'm, you know, I'm conscious of, of all of that, that interplay. And, you know, it's just been interesting as well, I think, has elevated because of the pandemic and just seeing like the push back into cars, but also onto bikes. So really, how, how are we going to work through that as we move forward?
What do you think are the biggest issues facing Littleton's mobility?
I, I mean, probably, probably traffic, right? Where, we were in an upswing, I think. You know, there was, there was interest in our, in our public transport, RTD. But now, you know, again, due to COVID, I think we're, it's a real struggle on what that's going to look like here. And so are we pushing people back to cars? And, and what does that mean? You know, we're, we're pretty bound here. We don't have a lot of room to expand or grow. Our, our roads are what they are. So how do we move people around safely and efficiently?
Of all the modes of transportation, auto, transit, pedestrian, bicycle, which gets you most excited and why?
Gets me most excited. You know, I would say, I mean, I, I like being out. So I, I think the, the biking paths and the walking trails and how they can connect us more efficiently, right? And particularly into downtown, I think is really important. And that, you know, probably figuring out that puzzle, you know, as we do have some interesting challenges with, with Santa Fe and, and some different barriers, I find to be pretty, pretty interesting and exciting.
Transportation, transportation is a regional issue. What are the most important regional transportation issues facing Littleton and the region?
You know, probably movement through, through the city. You know, how, again, we used to, and we, we still do, of course, we have the light rail connection. Is that going to continue, I think? And what is our, our bus system going to look like? Broadway is a really big corridor, Santa Fe are big corridors. And so, you know, we need to work in tandem with the communities around us. I think that's probably, you know, one of the most important things we can do. Make sure that, you know, we're all on the same page and, and trying for the same, and invested.
How do you define mobility?
I think it, it includes, I mean, it's, it's movement-based, but it includes certainly the, the access and ease of use and comfort.
If you had to list in order how the city should spend its transportation dollars, what would be your top three?
Top three on, I would, well, if, if money were no issue, but, but I know better. You know, certainly the big intersection that everyone talks about at, at Santa Fe and Mineral, because I know that there's a public visibility with that. And then, you know, I think, I think improvement on the, the walking and the trail systems, I think widening of sidewalks is really important, particularly ones that lead into, to downtown.
And give us your top two ways to educate and engage the community about transportation issues.
Yeah, I, you know, it's, for me, it's been a lot of, of word of mouth. So I'm pretty active in my neighborhood and I, you know, most everyone knows now what, you know, the board that I sit on. And so I engage with them and check in with them. It helps now, you know, I'm, I'm part of a school community as well. So I can, I speak with, with folks and parents there to kind of understand their perspective on things. On my own social media, I have shared, you know, some of the city of Littleton's work around in vision and encouraged folks to participate in that way too. You know, I try to always kind of keep my eyes and ears open. You know, for better or worse, I'm also on Nextdoor. And so, you know, I can take that, that input as well.
And then the last question is, tell us how you think Littleton funds street maintenance and transportation?
Like how, where do they get the money to?
I think, I think that's what the question is asking. I left it for last.
Well, the bulk of, I mean, the bulk of the city's budget is on, is on sales tax, which is why I have suddenly become a big, big supporter of purchasing local as much as I can. But then there's also been tremendous work on growing our grant revenue and I, huge kudos to the team for that. I'm a fundraiser myself, so grant money is, is always sought after. But that takes a lot of work and often there's a match component too, I know.
Is there anything else? I think we've got a couple of minutes and, and you didn't indicate a second choice. Is there anything else you want to tell us?
Yeah, I didn't necessarily indicate a second choice because I feel pretty invested into this board. You know, we, I think it's fair to say, we, we kind of had a, what a slow, slow ramp up. And it took a while to kind of get our, our feet under us, just on who we are and what we wanted to do and really how we could help. I feel we're, we're, we're hitting that, you know, we're, we're kind of finding our pace and our groove now. And, you know, so I feel like, almost like my work in many ways has kind of just started. So, you know, leaving it now would feel like I was just cutting it short and I didn't quite get to see it through to the end. So, you know, for me, it's, this is what I've put my time and energy. I focused on learning our, our transportation issues. And I want to, you know, kind of go, go deep in the one, in the one area.
Mayor, do we have a couple more minutes? I'd like to ask just one more question.
Sure, go ahead.
Kelly, with the PEL process underway and us concluding this most recent round of, of Transportation Improvement Project, funding and moving into the next cycle, what do you want the Transportation Mobility Board to really be doing for council going forward? Because, you know, I think I'd probably speak for all of us, maybe, maybe not, when I say your board is about to get super important. And we certainly want to be hearing from you. What do you want to be saying to council?
I'd like us to be honestly a bit, a bit more assertive and, and feel, yeah, feel, feel stronger in our voice. So, you know, I think what we want to say is, we get it, your funds are extremely limited. So with that in mind and reflective of what's been put forward in the master plan, you know, these are our recommendations. You know, we, we say it with an acknowledgement that we're also not the city planners, right? We're not the engineers. But we do represent the greater public of the city of Littleton. And so, you know, I think our culmination of voices comes to show what, you know, what do the families want? What does the elderly population want? You know, we try to bring all of those voices forward. So we'd like to be able to say, you know, we thought about it, we get the funding, we get the master plan. You know, X, Y and Z are really what we would want to invest in right now. And then a big focus, we've kind of brought our scope in to really look at downtown Littleton. You know, all modes of mobility therein. And I think we'll have a really strong voice too when it comes to how that should look going forward. And we'd like to really be able to recommend to council actions, you know, mobility-wise that we would like to see there.
Well, Kelly, thank you for your participation on the board and for talking with us tonight. We really appreciate both of those things.
Absolutely. Thanks to all of you as well.
And thank you, Kelly, for serving on that board. And that, and you guys are, you better hold on your hat because you're about to get busy.
Noted. We're ready. We're ready.
Thank you. Have a good evening.
Thanks a lot. You too. Take care.
All righty. So there we go. We are down to our last interview.
So it is Dave McFadyen, and if you are ready.
We are ready. And just a heads up to council member Faye, he does have a second choice, if you recall, of the BOA. All righty.
Here he comes.
Thank, thank you. Hey David, how are you tonight? Nope, you're on mute. You, you're still on mute. There we go. There we go. Sorry about that. All right. Thank you, David, for joining. I'm Jerry. All right, thank you, David, for joining. I'm Jerry. So thank you for joining us, so we're gonna ask you a few questions.
Sure.
And we have 10 minutes, so I'm just gonna go right to it. Alright. So for the planning commission that you're applying for.
Sure.
Alright, so attendance at the planning commission is crucial due to their, their work that they are, that they're doing right now. And if selected, and they meet the second and fourth Mondays of each month. Now, so if selected, will you be able to commit to that kind of time?
Sure thing.
Great, thank you. Have you had an opportunity to read the powers and the duty documents for the commission? And if so, have you, do you have any questions or concerns regarding your ability?
I've, I've read through parts of it. I don't have any questions at the moment, you know, it's a I've been on boards like this before, just not at the city level, and you learn as you, as you get going, you, you, you learn more. And, but I'll be prepared if I get selected. I'll have gone through it all.
Great, thank you. The planning commissions spends a great deal of time reviewing codes and zoning. Share with us your experience, if you have any in the area, and if not, you don't have any experience, just tell us how you will prepare yourself to handle these important tasks.
Sure. So direct experience with zoning and things like that is limited to when we encounter things like that, when I was a board member and president of the board of our HOA here in, in Littleton, where we had some smaller residential type things. Large, you know, commercial zoning, mixed use, all that kind of stuff. I know what it is, but as far as how it all ticks, it's go-to-school time and, you know, I'll, I'll know what I can, you know, up before we get started. But I do not have firsthand experience and all that.
Not a problem. The council's made it a top priority to complete the core of the comprehensive plan over the next nine months. The planning commission is an integral part in this work. What skills do you bring that will benefit the commission, staff and council as we complete this planning? Which, and it has a lot to do with the zoning and coding.
Okay. Okay, so skills that I bring, I'm used to bringing many people together. I'm used to bridging personality gaps. I'm used to trying to work with both sides of an argument to reach an agreement, dealing whether with, with homeowners, whether it was with manufacturers, when I was president of a worldwide trade organization, manufacturers, cities, municipalities, police, everything else. So I've got a lot of experience doing things like that, and I ask a lot of questions. And I'm not a person who likes answers that say, we've always done it that way. So I, I like to just make sure I've turned over all the rocks.
Great, thank you. Cities all over the area are dealing with the challenges of affordable and attainable housing. Construction defects, limitations, increased traffic and other growth issues, and Littleton is no different. As a nearly built-out community, what role can the planning commission play as it relates to this conversation and eventual decisions that may need to be made? And just, I just want to let you know, I don't write these questions, I just read them.
Not a problem at all. So obvious question, especially when you're nearly built out. So obviously you want to have a certain, if I'm not mistaken, I believe we're not growing in population like we might want to. We want to look at retaining younger people, younger people in the workforce. So you're gonna have to look at existing zoning and codes and decide whether or not an affordable housing unit goes there in order to attract a certain type of person or, or attract a certain type of business that keeps Littleton relevant going forward, and they're gonna be hard decisions, you know, people aren't gonna want that in their backyard, they're not gonna want that across the street. But if we don't do that, then we continue to get older, and if we get to continue to get older, we encounter you know, drops in tax base and many other things. And so I think the planning commission is huge, you know, and you've got to be forward-thinking. Reactionary is terrible. If you're reacting, you're way behind the curve. And so you got to plan. So I think it's a, a big, important commission to have.
The planning commission is a recommending body to the city council. Council does not have to take the recommendations of the commission, and occasionally it does not. What will you bring to the relationship with the commission and to the council in order to support the decisions of the commission and the vision of the council?
Okay, well, obviously, I would hope the commission would recommend to the council something that it strongly believes is the correct decision. And if we encounter difficulties or pushback that I believe that I have a sound argument for, then I'm gonna offer it up and, and, and try to do my best to give all the council members an informed, you know, basis to, to make their decision. And, you know, no one point of view is always correct. You've got to listen to everybody, and then when you do, you make your mind up and you, you go for it, and, and that's what I would do.
Great, thank you. That is my last question for them. I'm gonna turn it over to Councilmember Fay, who has a few questions for you.
Okay, good evening.
Hi.
Hi.
This has to do with the Board of Adjustment. And first question is, do you have any concerns regarding your ability to perform the duties outlined in the powers and duties document for this board?
So I apologize, I did not read everything for that board. But I did prior to the application, I, I don't have that right in front of me. And if I didn't think I could do what was necessary, I would not have put it down as my choice, second choice.
Okay.
So.
Um, next, do you have construction background?
I have many clients of mine, I'm a small business coach, that are in construction, and I've gone through the ups and downs with them of many different things. But I myself have not ever been in the construction industry. But, yeah, I'm sorry.
I think you answered the next part of that, and that is, what experience do you have that would be of value if you don't have direct experience?
Got it, yeah, I've counseled them through many entanglement. So, but not a lawyer, just, just somebody helping them get their, their business moving in the right direction.
Next question, are you familiar with the Littleton Building Code?
I am not very familiar with it, other than a couple of instances in my own home where I had to have some permits done, and, and that's it. No specific reasons, other than a few items that came up with our HOA as well, which were setbacks, property lines, height restrictions, things like that.
What are your thoughts regarding quasi-judicial decision-making? And how do you see yourself working within a board governed by these rules?
Okay, very good question, and you got me there. Quasi-decision-making is a new one to me. I assume that's many different, you know, groups all.
If, if I could interrupt you, Scott, would you just mind giving that definition real quick?
Yeah, Dave, I'm happy to just quickly walk you through it. So sometimes, certain of our boards are asked to make decisions on what's called the quasi-judicial basis. And there they are, applying standards that are given to them, usually from the city code, and acting as judges, using a public record to make a decision. And obviously, that's very different from making a political decision, which has to do with what you want to have happen, not what the standards and public records say you need to happen. So that's what quasi-judicial.
Got it. Thank you, thank you.
Back to Carol.
Great, so I can answer that, thank you very much. So whenever I've been involved in a board or, or, or something of this manner, unless you're specifically there to make laws or something like that, then you're there to follow them. And so the way I would act with that is you're gonna recommend based on what that wording is, what the recommendation is, the, the information we are given, if it's, if it's in a statute, if it's in some kind of a code, it's there for a reason. And I'm gonna make the best decision I can based on the parameters and boundaries that are, that are put on me. You know, in our short period of time, I couldn't go into it, but I always had people, well, just, you know, just, they didn't mean that. Come on, you, I can have, you know, I'm sure that never happens, right? But that's not me, I, if it's there, it's there for a reason, and that's what I'm, I'm gonna follow. My, my wish list doesn't win.
Last question. This board makes decisions about grants and waivers to building codes based on specific criteria. What's your decision-making process?
Alright, so I believe that I'm, I would be a commission member to help the city of Littleton. So my first decision-making criteria is going to be, is what we are addressing in the best interests of the city of Littleton. If it is, then I want to see if we can make it happen without breaking any of the, the guidelines or, or laws or rules or anything else. And if it's a grant that's necessary or a change, it, to me, it doesn't matter, you know, who that person is, I don't have affiliations in that area. My guiding light is what's best for the city. I hope that answered your question.
Eric?
All right, well, thank you very much. Dave, thanks for spending some time with us tonight. And if, if you aren't selected to your first or second choice, are you willing to serve on another board or a commission if asked?
I, I would be, except probably for some of the arts ones, that's not up my alley of interest, as embarrassed as I am to say that. I don't know if I'd do very well, a stick man to me is a pretty darn good-looking drawing. But just about anything else, I would, I would love to be able to contribute if I can.
Alright, thank you. Thank you very much for your honesty there.
Yeah, no, you're welcome.
Alright, thanks for spending time with us, David.
My pleasure, thank you. Have a good rest of your evening.
Alright, well, that was good. So I think we have about, tomorrow night, we have about the same amount of interviews. So I think we went pretty good. Any changes you think we need to make on anything, anybody? I think it worked out, so. Alright, well, with that, keep your notes and figure it out.